Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Pursuant to NJ SA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Mr. Book?
Here.
Ms. Fritsch is absent. Mr. Hurley?
Here.
Mr. Ricardi is absent. Mr. Hudak?
Mr. Stafford Smith?
Here.
Ms. Parnas?
And Ms. Bradley?
Here. Do we have any resolutions this evening?
Yes, we do. We actually have several. Is it working? All right, tonight we have five resolutions, so just bear with me. Resolution number 2023-47, resolution of the zoning board of the township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting a D5 variance to permit one acre lot in the R1 zone without public sewer connection for property located at East Veterans Highway, block 19701, lots 12, 13.01, 13.02, 13.03, 13.04, and 13.05. Eligible to vote are Mr. Book, Mr. Stafford Smith, and Ms. Bradley.
We need a motion and a second, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Second resolution is resolution number 2023-48. That's the resolution of the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, denying use variance approval for warehouse office building for property located at 540 North County Line Road, block 2101, lots 16 and 17. Eligible to vote are Mr. Book, Mr. Hurley, and Ms. Bradley.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-49, that's the resolution of the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, denying reconsideration for warehouse office building for property located at 540 North County Line Road, block 2101, lots 16 and 17. Eligible to vote are Mr. Book, Mr. Hurley, and Ms. Bradley.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-50, resolution of the Zoning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting a variance to construct a new single-family dwelling on an undersized lot for property located at 19 Vermont Avenue, block 6111, lot 3. Eligible to vote, Mr. Book, Mr. Hurley, and Ms. Bradley.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And then finally, we have resolution number 2023-51, that's resolution of the Zoning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, granting variance relief for an as-built six-foot solid fence and two sheds on property located at 87 Buckingham Drive, block 13201, lot 36. Eligible to vote are Mr. Book, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Hudak, Mr. Stafford Smith, Ms. Parnas, and Ms. Bradley.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak? Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Parnas? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
That concludes the resolutions for this evening.
Do we have any minutes this evening?
Yes, we do. We have minutes from September 20, 2023, October 4th, 2023, October 18, 2023, and November 1st, 2023.
Move to approve all minutes as is placed upon the record.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley? Mr. Hudak? Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Parnas? And Ms. Bradley?
Yes. Yep. I have two vouchers before me, one from the Township of Jackson for the recording secretary for $150, and the other one is from King's Reporting for our recording secretary, also for $150. I need a motion and a second to pay both vouchers, please.
Move to pay both vouchers.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley? Mr. Hudak? Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Parnas? And Ms. Bradley?
Yes. And Mr. Murphy, do we have any announcements this evening?
Yes, we do. We have several. I'm going to start with application number three since Mr. Paxton is here. If you'd like to come forward, Mr. Paxton. If you would just enter your appearance, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Michael Paxton, on behalf of the applicant.
Very good. I understand that the applicant is requesting to be carried due to the lack of sufficient board members for a use variance?
That's correct.
Okay. That application is going to be granted, so I believe that we've selected February 21st, 2024 is the next listing, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And the applicant will waive time through that date?
Yes, we will.
Okay. So, the application number three, 30 Cassville Road, Carol Nuccolo, and I apologize if I said that incorrectly, Use Variance 3470, block 17302, lot 19. That application, number three on tonight's agenda, will be carried to the February 21st, 2024 meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. As it's been carried on the record, no additional notice will be required, and the applicant has been kind enough to waive time on the record. So that will be carried again until February 21st, 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton.
Have a good night.
You as well. We also have a couple other announcements. Number four is being carried, correct?
Yes.
Do you have the date for number four? So, we'll move forward. Application number five? Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Application number four, let's back up. Application number four, area properties at Pinewood Estates LLC, that's Interpretation V 3487, that's block 102, lot 1. That application is going to be carried to the January 3rd, 2024 meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. There will be no further requirement for notice, and the applicant has waived time. Application number five, that's BMOJ Inc., that is preliminary final site plan 899, and previously approved use variance 3316, block 6401, lot 22 and lot 21. That application is being carried to the February 7th, 2024 meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. No further notice will be required. The applicant has waived time. And then finally, number six, which is on the agenda for this evening, that's applicant Kahala DeBrookwood IV, preliminary final site plan 880 with use variance 3441, that is block 6002, lot 2 and 3. That application has also been carried to the February 7th, 2024 meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. No additional notice will be required, and the applicant has waived time. That concludes the calendar announcements this evening, but I do have a general statement that I'd like to make on behalf of the zoning board. In light of recent events in the Township of Jackson, I in my capacity as attorney for the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the Township of Jackson, have determined that a public statement is necessary on behalf of the chair, the vice chair, all members of the Jackson Township Zoning Board, and the zoning board's professionals. The Zoning Board of Adjustment of the Township of Jackson is a quasi-judicial board, and all of its members have sworn an oath to support both the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. Further, all board members have sworn to faithfully, impartially, and justly perform their duties as members of the Jackson Township Zoning Board. I can state with the utmost confidence that the members of the zoning board who sit before you this evening, along with those members who are not present tonight, do not take their oath lightly. I can assure the public that each member of this board has in the past acted faithfully, impartially, and justly, and that each board member will continue to act faithfully, impartially, and justly as they strive to make the appropriate land use decisions under applicable law to the best of their abilities for the benefit of each and every resident of the Township of Jackson. Recently, there have been publicized calls for certain board members to comment on certain ongoing items or issues within the township. As members of a quasi-judicial board and considering the oath to act faithfully, impartially, and justly, it is my opinion that it would be inappropriate for any board member to offer any comment on any one specific item or issue, or the issues or items as a whole, while sitting on this dais in their role as a board member. I have counsel, I as counsel, have expressly advised all board members that they should not offer any comment, have expressly advised all board members that while they are acting as members of this board, they should not offer any comment of any nature on any of the items or issues currently ongoing within the township, or any item or issue which may occur within the Township of Jackson in the future. The only items or issues that members of the zoning board are permitted to address in their role as board members are those permissible land use items or issues affecting a specific land use application, and those comments are to be made only during the public hearing or hearings on that specific application. This statement by counsel is intended to address all other items or issues on behalf of the board. This board, all of its members and its professionals expressly condemn discriminatory comments of any nature. During my tenure serving as the board's counsel, I have publicly condemned discriminatory speech of any kind, and I have ended any commentary which in my opinion has the potential to taint the impartiality of a meeting record due to the discriminatory nature of said commentary. Discriminatory comments of any kind have not been tolerated, nor will they be tolerated in the future. Public commentary on a land use application should be limited to the merits of the application itself, and comments which are discriminatory in nature have been and will continue to be stricken from the record, and the person and/or persons making said comments will be warned. In short, discriminatory comments are not and will not be tolerated and/or supported by the zoning board of the Township of Jackson. Thank you very much. Yes, we are, and if you'll allow me to make a resolution for that purpose. Whereas the Zoning Board of the Township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJ SA 10:4- of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four, and whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve, provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution, and whereas it is necessary for the zoning board of the township of Jackson to discuss in a session not open to the public matters relating to the item or items authorized by NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B, those matters being litigation or potential litigation, now therefore be it resolved by the zoning board of the township of Jackson to enter into executive session for discussion of litigation and/or potential litigation. It is anticipated that deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination that public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. Madam Chair, if I may have a, a resolution made?
Move to go into executive session.
Second.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Mr. Harley?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak? Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Parnas? And Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Second.
I will let the clerk of the township as well as the purchasing office know that those RFPs will need to be rebid.
Any additional matters for discussion, Mr. Murphy?
I have nothing further this evening.
Okay, we're going to move forward to applicant number one, John and Tracy DeRueville. Prelim- Mr. Gazarovski, we can't hear. John and Tracy DeRueville, preliminary and final site plan eight six two and amended approval eight six two dash one with youth variance three one eight one.
Good evening.
Oh.
I usually say, "Thank you, gentlemen, for raising your right hand," I won't say that this evening. Thank you for raising your right hands. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. If you would each please state your name and your positions with the board.
Evan Hill, board engineer.
Ernie Peters, board planner.
Gina Tumalo, assistant zoning officer.
Thank you very much.
Now we will move forward with applicant number one, sorry about that.
Good evening, Stephen Leoni. First, Mr. Murphy, I believe you've advised me and we've consented that there are only six members of the board here to vote on our application this evening. The applicant consents to going forward and we're aware of that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leoni, I appreciate you putting that on the record.
Could I just get one clarification with that? Obviously, I have no objection to Mr. Leoni proceeding forward with only six members being present. But my understanding is then at the end of this meeting, that will conclude the hearing and we will not be coming back for this additional missing member or members to hear testimony or, or vote on, or vote on the matter.
I think that's a decision, in my opinion, that can be held until your case in chief is concluded. I am not going to preclude any request based upon the lack of board members to, to carry the vote at this time. That's a decision that I will make at a later time if it's so requested. As far as I'm concerned, Mr. Leoni has consented to moving forward with your case, which is where we are. Again, if, if it is so necessary, I will ensure that any other board member who might, if, if that request is made and granted, this is all hypothetical. If it were to be requested and granted, of course, I would ensure that any of the board members who voted would be so certified to vote. But at this point, I'm not prepared to make a determination as to that, Mr. Gazarovski. What I'd like to do is continue with the, with the case.
Thank you. So it's my understanding that the applicant has completed its direct testimony and all its witnesses and we're at the point of open public comment and any objectors. I'm ready to go forward.
Refresh my recollection, I believe that we did open public comment at the end of the last hearing, is that correct?
That is my recollection, that is my recollection as well.
I believe that we, we always open public comment at the conclusion of testimony. And I believe I did re-watch this and I, now I'm questioning my own recollection, but to the best of my recollection, public comment was opened and closed.
Yes.
At the end, at the conclusion of the applicant's case.
And my last note is, we return on twelve twenty for Mr. Gazarovski's witnesses.
Yep, so I believe that we will not be opening to the public at this particular moment. But Mr. Gazarovski is, so long as you have concluded and you've rested, Mr. Gazarovski is free to move forward with his case in chief. Mr. Gazarovski, you are free to proceed.
I'm sorry, Mr. Leoni has concluded his case.
That was, that is, as far as I'm concerned, that is what Mr. Leoni just put on the record.
That's correct, I reserve the right to cross-examine his witnesses.
Of course.
And if I have rebuttal experts to deal with it, I expect to be able to do that.
If you'd like to reserve, it's important that you note that, if you'd like to reserve your right to call rebuttal witnesses, you may do so. But again, so that would mean that your case technically isn't concluded. You're reserving your right to call rebuttal witnesses?
Yes.
Very good.
I would object to that, if he's calling witnesses who will be giving direct testimony, those are not rebuttal witnesses. I mean, let's assume for the sake of argument, I understand he has a noise expert here. If I don't have a noise expert to testify, then he would not be able to have him called as a rebuttal witness.
That's fair.
I con- I do concur with that, I concur with that objection, that objection's sustained. If you're, if you're intending to offer a noise expert, I would do so at this point.
Or noise testimony. I don't.
I'm sorry?
I say, if you're offering noise testimony.
Let's assume for the sake of argument, my client who lives next door says she hears loud noises. You're going to call an expert rebuttal witness?
It depends, depends on what they testify to and what, what they have as proof of that.
No, that's not happening.
Well, I, I don't know, I, I reserve the right and you can rule on it.
I will rule on it if you, I, I, I understand, let me, let me put it this way. I will reserve a ruling until a later date, however, I understand and hear Mr. Gazarovski's concern. With that said, you know, you can reserve your right to call rebuttal witnesses and we can address that at the time. Otherwise, Mr. Gazarovski is free to proceed.
Okay. I was shown a series of proposed exhibits by Mr. Leoni, does he intend to introduce them as a part of his case?
No, I intend to introduce those as rebuttal exhibits if necessary. I've only put them there in case I need to use them.
I mean, that's really, I, I think that's improper, it's certainly unusual, and I would object to that procedure. But it's, leave it to the board to rule on it.
Can I get some clarity, you have exhibits that have not been introduced?
That's correct. For convenience this evening, I gave a flash drive to have them loaded, but said they had not been introduced yet.
And you're using them?
And they have copies of them.
Essentially, what I'm, what I'm understanding is that you would be using them to potentially impeach a witness or testimony?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I, again, I don't know why we're ruling on this objection at this point, but he, let's just proceed and, and if he tries to enter evidence, make your objection.
We're going to, we're going to proceed forward?
Yes.
Okay, let the board. Good evening, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ron Gazarovski, I'm an attorney with offices in Red Bank, New Jersey. I represent in this matter Mr. Dan Black and his wife, Vicky. They have been residents and live adjacent to the subject property for many, many years. I've discussed this matter with them, Mrs. Black is prepared to give testimony. She is rather shy and asked if in fact, rather than by taking her through questions and answers, she could simply read a statement into the record, which of course should be subject to cross-examination for. I discussed this briefly with the board attorney, I did not discuss it with my colleague, Mr. Leoni, but I would like to proceed in that fashion if it's acceptable to the board.
Mr. Leoni, any objection?
I have no objection.
Okay, neither does the board.
Ms. Black, would you please be so kind as to step forward?
Good evening, Ms. Black, how are you?
Yep, Mrs. Black, you have to, would you prefer to speak into this or hold this close to you?
I'll try this, and I'm not really shy, but.
I think you have to use this, so.
Do I?
Just wait a second. I've, earlier.
Do we want to swear in? No, I don't want to swear you in. If you would, Ms. Black, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much, if you would please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address and affiliation to this application.
My name is Vicky Black, B-L-A-C-K, I live at fourteen sixty-one Tom's River Road in Jackson, and we live next door to the applicant.
Okay, and you're objecting to this application?
We are.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Mrs. Black, I thank you for introducing yourself, and I do in fact have a copy of the, your testimony which you, which you referred to. The board has graciously consented to, rather than have me question and answer you because you're intimidated by my size, then you could simply read this into the record if you would. You have to go very slowly, don't rush, take your time. Let me ask you a couple of questions, but how, how long have you lived in the township of Jackson?
I've lived in Jackson since nineteen eighty-two.
Now, you earlier stated that you live in a residence which is immediately adjacent to the subject application.
That's correct.
And my understanding is if you're facing the applicant's property, you are to the right of that residence.
Yes.
Is that a residential home that you have there?
Yes, it is.
And how long have you lived in that home?
We built that home in nineteen eighty-seven.
Okay, so you lived there for close to forty years or whatever it may be?
Yep, yeah.
Raised your family there?
Yep.
Could you just describe briefly what the surrounding area is like? In other words, in the area which is immediately surrounding the subject property? Is it rural in nature, is it built upon, is it industrial uses? What exactly is there?
It is rural in nature, our property is mostly open field, some woods. Across the street is a horse farm, most of the properties are several acres. It's residential.
Okay, what's the size of your property?
Well, over the years, we have bought several pieces as they became available, so right now, we have just shy of thirty acres.
Okay, would you just tell the board before you begin your testimony, what is the nature of any construction which is located upon those thirty acres?
Construction?
No, it's buildings.
Oh, okay. There is a small house in the front on one separate parcel that is rented. Then there's my husband's welding shop, Blacky's Welding, which is on a separate parcel. Our home is on, I think, eight acres, and then we bought three adjoining lots which actually front on Ridge Road, but they all adjoin our property.
Okay.
So altogether, it's twenty-nine something.
Now, if you'd like, would you please read your statement into the record?
Okay.
You don't mind if I sit down, do you?
You go right ahead.
You don't mind, Mr. Murphy?
Not at all.
Okay. Some of it's going to reiterate what you just asked me, but I'm going to read it anyway. So I've lived in Jackson since nineteen eighty-two, and my husband, Dan, has lived here his entire life. We have always enjoyed good relationships with all of our neighbors over the years and sincerely regret that we're now compelled to be in this adversarial position with the applicant. In nineteen seven, I'm just going to give you a little bit of background where we're coming from. In nineteen seventy-six, when my husband was about twenty years old, he bought the home on one acre, which is the rental home that, that I mentioned. Over the next forty-seven years, we have bought additional adjoining properties piece by piece when it became available, and now we own almost thirty acres adjoining the DeRueville site. And we share a westerly common property line of about eight hundred and fifty feet. Thirty-five years ago, we built our home more than six hundred feet off the road because we wanted to have peace, quiet, privacy. Recently, well, depends what you mean by recently, several years ago, we had an approval to do a subdivision of some of the land in the back, the, the three lots in front on Ridge Road. During COVID, we let that expire because we just were not sure how the market was going to be, but it's certainly our intent at some point to do that again. We have both worked very hard to acquire, pay the taxes on, and maintain this land, and we just can't stand by and watch our property and our neighbors' properties be severely devalued and our way of life diminished by this application and the actions of the applicant. We were notified in two thousand seventeen when our new neighbors, the DeRuevilles, were applying to this board for approval to continue the two residences on the property and to build a commercial storage building. We didn't attend that meeting or object as we had no problem with that. We thought they were just putting up a pole barn, because that's what it was asking for, and that's fine. That conforms to the area and it is, excuse me, that is in fact what the board approved. Among the conditions of the approval, however, was the language, quote, "The applicant will only store equipment and vehicles in the building or under the canopy." And, quote, "Will not conduct any repairs or maintenance of equipment or vehicles." It was also a requirement that the applicant reside in the home on the premises. As the transcript of that two thousand seventeen hearing shows, in response to her attorney, Mr. Shea's, very specific, direct questions, it's undeniable that Mrs. DeRueville agreed to and clearly understood all the terms and restrictions of that approval. In the applicant's two thousand seventeen testimony, it was stated that their business would continue to operate out of its Tom's River location, which is in a commercial zone on Route nine. In their current application, they have said that they now want to consolidate operations to the Jackson site. Among the pictures that I have tonight are pictures from Google Earth showing that Tom's River site that they are intending to bring here to this residential area of Jackson to show what that operation looks like and the magnitude of what they are proposing. What troubles us most is the disparity between the intent of the two thousand seventeen variance and the day-to-day reality of what has been going on on the property ever since. Shortly after that two thousand seventeen approval, they started bringing in all sorts of heavy equipment and trailers onto the property. Their willful disregard of the board's conditions has continued over the years and has gotten progressively worse, and there appears to be no oversight of what has become an industrial-type operation in our residential neighborhood. I've seen many forty-foot box trailers, flatbed trailers, some empty and many stacked with trees, things that I think are called loaders, bulldozers, dump trucks, and all sorts of heavy equipment. Not in the building, not under the canopy, but out in the open fields on the grass. In two thousand nineteen, they brought in tub grinders, excavators, and piles of material that they were mixing, storing, and transporting out. I've seen them working on heavy industrial equipment out in the middle of the open field. In her testimony at the two thousand seventeen hearing, Mrs. DeRueville affirmed that she knew machinery had to be kept under the canopy and not in the open air for environmental reasons. So in addition to disrespecting the conditions set by the board, they clearly show little to no regard at all for environmental issues associated with using, storing, and maintaining these machines. As Mr. Leoni stated at the July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two hearing, the applicant is, quote, "One of the largest land-clearing companies in the state of New Jersey and other states," end quote. At that hearing, they entered into evidence pictures of many pieces of very big industrial equipment that they own, which they are now proposing to bring to this property for maintenance, storage, and repair. With these machines, we would have thousands of gallons of oil, fuel, hydraulic oil, antifreeze, and other hazardous materials on the property, creating potential for an environmental nightmare just yards from the wetlands from something as simple as a leaky seal, a broken hose, human error, or simple carelessness. It is inconceivable to me that this could. It is inconceivable to me that this could be permitted in this residential zone. Can I just have a drink of water? Thank you. In testimony before the zoning board supporting their current application, the applicant said that logs, trailers, and heavy equipment are never stored on the property, except occasionally logs will stay overnight one day. She said that the big equipment goes from job site to job site and is not brought back to the yard. I have photos, which I'll show you, showing that they have been doing all of the above for years and continue to, again, demonstrating a lack of credibility on the applicant's part and a lack of respect for their neighbors, the environment, and any conditions set by the zoning board. I have, just for an example, photos of one massive machine, which looks to me like what she described in her testimony as a tree shearer, sitting on the property for weeks this summer, sitting in the field. It was not in the pole barn. It was not under the canopy or on a concrete pad. This broken machine, presumably full of hazardous fluids, was sitting in and being actively worked on in the open field in the grass, yards away from the wetlands, among all of the other many pieces of machinery that have been there for months. It's also important, I want to note, that the Deruvals purchased the 4.3-acre property immediately to the west of them. So our property is to the right. They bought the other one to the left. And they have extended their privacy fence to most of that land. They apparently converted a garage within that fenced area of that property for additional storage and have been using a newly created driveway on that property to access 1435, the property that they're looking to build up. And to me, that suggests an intent to quietly expand the industrial use to that property as well. From what we see, they've taken this board's approval of a simple commercial storage building on what used to be a chicken farm and a horse farm in a Pinelands residential zone and turned it into an industrial site flying under the radar with no monitoring or regulation. These sites have their places in towns, but a trucking depot, heavy equipment, maintenance, and storage facility should simply not be in a residential neighborhood. The applicant should inquire an industrial property and go through the rigorous planning process where all of the potential issues like traffic impact, fuel oil and waste oil storage, power washing of heavy equipment, pollution, and noise are addressed. There are several properties in Jackson on the market currently that could accommodate them, or they could certainly relocate to another area as they work statewide and in New York, Pennsylvania, and Vermont, according to Mrs. Deruval's testimony. They're not central- Jackson is not an integral part of where they have to be. There is no reason why the business has to be stationed in Jackson. I'll also mention that despite the board's requirement that the Deruvals live on the premises at all times from September 2020 on, they are still registered voters of Tom's River, not Jackson, and they have voted as recently as last month in Tom's River. Given how they've exploited the use of the property since the first approval and blatantly disregarded and disrespected all of the board's restrictions and requirements, I am beyond concerned about what would happen if any further approvals were granted. I'm here tonight to ask for your help in stopping a very bad situation from becoming much worse. If one of New Jersey's largest land-clearing companies were to be allowed to continue or, heaven forbid, expand their industrial operation in this residential zone, it would not only set a precedent of allowing this intensity of a use in a residential neighborhood, but also seriously impact the environment, the nature of the area, and greatly diminish our and our neighbors' property values and quality of life. Thank you for your time and consideration of our concerns.
Okay, Mrs. Black, when I introduced you, I also stated that this document, which you've read, you were the author of that document.
Correct.
Did I have anything at all with regard to the preparation of this document?
You never saw it until just now.
I saw it just now. Okay, now, you've referred to two things. You referred to some photographs, and you've also referred to some video, and I have spoken with a gentleman who handles the video, and I would like to have marked first the photographs which you have and just briefly go through them, okay?
Sure.
So ju- just, I apologize. I'm going to interrupt for just a minute. There was an evidentiary issue brought to my attention.
I'm sorry?
There was an evidentiary issue brought to my attention. Apparently, we have marked two items as O1 inadvertently. Apparently, on July twentieth of 2022, some photographs submitted by Ms. Black were marked O1. And then at the last meeting we were heard, November first of 2023, we marked the 2017 transcript as O1. Is there any objection to changing the marking of the transcript to O2?
That's fine.
Okay.
No objection.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we're at O3 then, Mr. Gazarovski. We're at O4? Yeah. Hold on, I'm going to correct the record for a minute.
Per Jeff Purrow's notes, he has O1 labeled as a transcript from August 2017, O2 labeled as an NOV, and O3 labeled as pictures.
All right, so we're at O5.
I don't know if that matches your record.
Five, O4? No, we're at O5 because we had marked two O1s. O1 was marked back in July of 2022, so that should be, that transcript should be O2?
So we're just going to push everything down a little?
So, right, so the transcript of November 2017 is O2. What was O2 under?
And then the NOV was labeled O2, so that will become O3?
That'll be O3.
And then O3 labeled as pic- pics, as in pictures, will become O4?
O4.
Okay.
Correct, so we're at O5 now. Thank you.
I have my copy. What? Oh, I don't know. Oh, is that it, or is that another one?
Mark, oh my god. Mr. Gazarovski, are you marking these collectively as O5?
I'm going to, I'll, we can call them O5 dash, and I'll identify each one.
That will be, that will be fine. Thank you.
Okay. Hey, Mrs. Black, you earlier indicated to the board that you took a series of photographs, correct?
Yeah, over the years, I've taken photographs.
We have marked as O5 a series of photographs, and they're quite numerous, and I want to take you through them one by one and just ask them whether or not you were present when those photographs were taken, and what you believe they depict.
Okay.
Okay, so collectively, we're identifying them as Exhibit O5. And when I show you the first photograph, it is identified as 1309, two, two nineteen.
That's the date.
It's okay.
Thirteen oh nine, and then I have the date written after.
So thirteen oh nine is the number you used to depict the photograph.
Correct.
And what is following is the date.
That's right.
Just briefly, and please don't go into length because you have quite a few photographs. What do they show?
The first one here, I have them right here in front of me.
I'm going to have to object to a photograph from two nineteen that doesn't reflect what's on the property today.
Oh, she's giving you the date that it was on the property.
The relevance of it being in two nineteen, it could be two thousand, and it wouldn't matter.
But the purpose of this is to show a continuing course of conduct as to how the applicant has been utilizing this property, and I do believe it's evidentiary.
I agree with you, Mr. Gazarovski. You may proceed. The objection is overruled.
For the board, for the board and Mr. Gazarovski, you had provided all of these photos to Anthony so he could show on the board. However, they're by date, and there's probably, what, fifteen or twenty different folders, and they're not in any sequential order like you're presenting. How, we have to be able to show these to the public. So are you able to, do you have a file name that you could give us, or how do we pick?
I put them in individual folders so that they would stay in date order, and they are. They're all in the exact order of what I have given you.
Okay, so he just has to go one by one?
He'll start with the top folder, and that will be the 2019 pictures. The next one will be July of 2022. Right, so that's the first one. That, and I took all of these, so yes, I was present at all of them. This was on February 2nd of 2019. They were what looks to, I don't know anything about this business, but to me, it looks like they were grinding up material, mixing different materials together, and shipping it out.
Objection. There's no evidence of that. Speculation on this witness's part, not speculation as to what's there, but what was going on.
Okay. And I can just say that was there on that day?
Yeah, I'm going to sustain that objection.
Well, obviously, the photograph speaks for itself.
Mr. Gazarovski, I'm going to sustain that objection. We can testify to what's in the photographs, but unless Ms. Black has personal knowledge of the operations, she can't testify as to what is go- what exactly is being done.
Let me, I mean, with regard to all of these photographs, you took them, did you not?
I did, yes.
So rather than going into speculating as to what exactly the operation was, just identify the photograph and say that you took it, and we rely upon the photograph speaking for itself, okay?
Very good. Okay, the next picture, 1323, which I also took on February 2nd, is, this was a view from our driveway back at that time, box trailers lined up.
Now, as I see it, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight box trailers lined up, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Just a moment. Anthony, is there a way to make that larger? Thank you.
Go to the next one.
The next one is July 26th, a trailer with logs on it.
You also have to read the identification number.
Oh, okay, eight five oh four, July 26th, a trailer with logs on it.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
The next photo is the following day, seven twenty-seven, number eight five two five.
Identify the photo and the date.
Okay, okay. Eight five two five, which is taken the following day, trailers with logs on it, still on the property despite the fact that the applicant said they never stay more than a day.
Okay.
The next picture, eight six two seven, eight eight twenty-two, there are those log trailers still there. So they've been there a couple of weeks. Next picture, nine oh seven nine.
Objection, objection. You're saying it's the same logs that were there on seven twenty-seven twenty-two and on eight eight twenty-two. On what basis do you make that?
What number, what number, what's the number of the photograph you're referring to?
It was, you testified as to eighty-five twenty-five and eighty-six twenty-seven.
So you're going to have an opportunity to cross-examine, okay? I'm going to, I understand your question, but you are going to have an opportunity to cross-examine. She can put her case on.
Go to the next one.
Okay. Next one, nine oh seven nine, on September 27th of 22. A, I don't know what you call that, but it's sitting out there in the grass, not under a canopy or in a building.
Okay.
Nine oh eight oh, also on nine twenty-seven. Additional equipment out here. This looks like that's in gravel. And note the Alborn Supply trailer. That Alborn Supply is another company owned by the Deruvals that is run out of another location in Tom's River, so they're also bringing that equipment here. The next picture is nine six seven one on October 31st, and it's again a picture of logs on a trailer. The next picture, nine seven five oh on November 8th, is, because you can tell by looking at the two pictures, one after the other, it's the same logs on the trailer a week later. Next picture, nine eight 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 on 1114. Again, logs, some logs on the trailer, sitting out in the open. Next picture, oh one nine one on December 12th. Two trailers of logs, and note all the other equipment out in the background, sitting outside. And also notice the big, on the left-hand side of oh one nine one, there's that red and white big piece of equipment, which is still there. In the next picture, oh two six nine on December 22nd. And note also the other stuff, materials laying around, this piping and, which they're not supposed to have on the property. Next picture, oh two seven three, December 22nd, is just a wide shot of what's going on there. Everything out, all the equipment and pieces laying around. Next picture, oh three one seven on December 27th. Again, now we have two, two trailers of logs. Oh three three one on December 28th. Just showing again what's out there in the open. Oh four three eight on January 11th, log trailer, two log trailers. And if I look at the picture before, it might, you might see some evidence that they're the same. And again, lots more equipment building up in the background there. And note, that's not on a concrete pad, all that stuff. That's just grass. Oh five two oh, January 17th. Couple, several trailers of logs. Oh five nine two, this they have hidden between the fence that they have behind their home and the old stables that they want to take down and replace. I don't, it looks to me, I think that's a septic tank and a whole bunch of other junk. Next picture, oh nine two oh, March, I'm going to say March, March 20th of 23. Look at that. Some kind of crane being brought into the property. I don't know, to work on something, I don't know. Next picture, thirteen eighty four twenty-six twenty-three. Huge equipment out in the open, not under a canopy, not in a building. Thirteen eighty-three, four twenty-six twenty-three. Is that the same date as the last one? Yeah, same, same date, so it was showing from a different angle, other stuff on that property. Next is a, on four twenty, picture number thirteen ninety-four is on four twenty-seven. Some changes have been made to that area where the septic tank is, additional stuff in, some stuff out. Seventeen twenty-four, June 5th of 23. Somebody pouring some kind of something into a something, again, on grass. No, no concrete under that. Seventeen forty-eight, June 7th of 23. They've now moved some kind of a deer, John Deere, piece of equipment to that space, and a trailer, and it looks like a truck also, to the space between the fence and the old building. June 16th, oops, I'm sorry, eighteen seventy-two, June 16th. I don't know if I have to say anything, just lots of trucks, lots of equipment at a place where they never store equipment, never bring equipment. Next picture, eighteen seventy-three, June 16th of 23. Same thing. Eighteen eighty-nine, June 18th of 23. The septic tank is still there behind the fence and the old building. Now we have some logs being stored back there as well. Nineteen eleven, June 20th of 23. Look at that. Look, I have no words. There's just all kinds of stuff back there. Nineteen ninety-one, June 30th. That's that big thing that I mentioned in my testimony that I saw them working on. At this point, I guess it was just parked. And that was June 30th. Okay, next one, nineteen ninety-six, June 30th. There are some logs, lots of big equipment. The next picture, nineteen ninety-eight, is- The next picture, 1998, is the same day, just a different view. Next one, 2054, on July 4th. That big piece that I showed you a couple pieces back, here it is now. They've apparently moved it, it's still in the field, but out where they can work on it more. And they were actively working on it there in the open field. 2731, 8/30/23. Again, just another picture showing that the huge amount of stuff that was there on a couple of days, or a couple of pictures ago, which was weeks ago, is all still there. That was 2731 I just did? Okay, next is 2781. There's a, some kind of a, I guess that's a trailer and lots of other things parked there. 2928, this is kind of a different angle, on September 20th. This is the area to the left of their pole barn. And this stuff, this kind of stuff is there almost all the time. 2929, on September 20th. Hold on, just one second. Yeah, so I showed you two pictures back, that same trailer, okay, maybe it's, I'm gonna say it's an identical trailer, still sitting there 18 days later. Looks like the exact same location. 2930, on September 20th. There's that big piece of equipment still there. 2934, September 20th. Just another shot of what other beautiful pieces of equipment they have parked there. 3230, this is about a month later, October 15th. Still, they're lined up kinda nicely here, but there's still a lot of stuff that we're told is not being kept there. 3635, November 9th. So that's almost a month later. That blue stuff on the right, whatever that is, is still sitting there. These yellow things are still there. That thing on the far left, moor bark, that's there almost all the time. You've probably noticed that in every picture. 3636, November 9th. Again, it's all still just sitting there. Looks like a couple of things have moved, but most of it is still there. 3686, November 16th. That big truck, that I hadn't seen before. That's there parked in front of the building on November 16th. And in the next picture, November 19th, on 3709, you can see it's still there. I didn't get the whole thing in the picture, but all that other equipment is still there also. 3710, on November 19th. Just a, same day, just another shot of, of what's there. Oh, okay, November 19th. A better picture showing that that truck is still there after, after an extended period of time. 3715, that's 11/21. So that's two days later, still there. Now, the next one, 3773, is just to show you what the place looks like at night with it lit up. It doesn't, the picture doesn't really do it justice, but they had, I don't know why, they had it all lit up at night, that one night. So it was, it was very bright. 3857, this was just last week, 12/12. This is that area between the fence, you see the fence on the left and the chicken coop on the right. This is what they have stashed in there now. Tractor, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what they're called, but you can see them there. 3862, December 12th. Again, I think the last couple of pictures are all just to give you kind of a snapshot of what it looks like a week ago and pretty much still today. So that would be 3862, 3864, and 3865. They were all taken on 12/12, a week ago. The next couple of pictures, and I just have three more. 8587 is a picture of the outside of their Toms River location that they say they wanna consolidate here. Quite a bit of equipment there. But the next two pictures are Google Earth of that site, just to give you an idea of how they keep it and what they're proposing to bring to Jackson. The next two pictures are that. 0827. Yeah, that's the Google Earth. That's, there are two shots of Google Earth from different angles, so you can see what it's about.
Now, with regard to these photographs, were they all taken individually by you?
Yes.
Was I present with you when any of these photographs were taken?
No.
Okay. At this particular point in time, I would move to have these exhibits marked into evidence. You don't have any objections?
No. Still moved, I have copies, yes.
Now, my understanding is there was also a, a video of sorts, which you discussed, a gentleman who was in charge of making that work. I have no knowledge of how to do that.
There is.
Okay, I'm sorry. You hear me now? You could hear me a long ways away now, can't you?
Yes, I, I did make a eight-minute kinda composite video, so I wouldn't have to bore you with hours of videos that I have. I just took clips of all of them and put it into an eight-minute video, which I gave to the gentleman. However, he told me that he can't play the audio, because the audio is hooked to the microphones. So I, I have it on my phone, but I'm sure the sound isn't gonna relay.
Let's just forget the sound, let's run through them and...
Oh, the sound is, okay, we could do that.
Give it a try. Maybe you can give us a little play-by-play.
Can you hear this? I have it on my phone. So that's the sound of trucks coming in with those logs. I'm sorry, I was standing on instated ground there.
Just so we're clear, this is not, the intent of this is not to reflect any sign. The intent is just to reflect the activity that was going on, on the site.
This sound, that, you can't hear. That truck was going clang, clang, clang.
Don't worry, don't worry about the sign, just walk through.
Okay, that was a truck making a lot of noise. This is that big piece of equipment that, that I said they were working on out in the field. I think that's that, well, it's a crane working on something. Looks like a crane to me. Oh, you can hear it. Or is that just static? Yeah, you can hear it, okay, good. It's not very loud, though. You can't really hear what I hear. Now, this is from my front yard. It's not loud, it's not the decibels, but it's the drone. Do you hear that? There's a video of that guy pouring something in something. This may not be sound. This may be just a panoramic view of our view. This is the 2019, when I said I assumed they were mixing soils. This is what we saw going on. That was February of 2019. From my driveway. This is from the front of my house. Again, not horribly loud, but it makes you crazy. You hear it all the time. I don't think I have to say what that is. It's a, a representation of what you get in this kind of a use. Again, I don't know if that's a compressor, I don't know, but it's resonating from over there. This was just last week, maybe. No, there's no. I just kept, kept this long because I want you to see, it's not just five seconds, it goes on and on. This is from my front porch. And look how far away we are, and I'm still, still hearing. I zoomed in to try to see what it was coming from, but I, I don't know. The door is open, so maybe it's something inside. That's just a clip of air brakes. Which, air brakes, which we hear often. There's some piece of equipment being moved around on the property. More of the droning noise. I suppose this is just another view of everything on a different day. Is that the end? Okay.
That's it?
Okay.
With regard to the videos which we just looked at, these were taken individually by you?
They were. And they're just examples of what we see and hear often on a daily basis. Sometimes I'm out in the yard and hear it and, and have my phone. Sometimes I'm in the house and I hear the ones that are from my front yard. I've probably been in the house and I hear it and go outside and, and able to catch a clip.
Let me ask this question. You at no time utilized any type of a scientific device to measure the noise that was emanating, did you?
No.
This was just what you heard from your human ear?
Exactly.
Okay, fine. I would move to have this video entered into evidence as well at this time.
Okay. Still moved, that will be 06.
Those are all the questions I have of my client, Mr. Leoni, if you'd like to cross-examine her.
Yes.
That's fine. I'm sorry?
I'd say, are we ready?
Am I ready? You're not cross-examining me, you're cross-examining her.
Mister, gentlemen, just one minute, please. Did you get that, the video was marked 06? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mrs. Black was born ready. I said, Mrs. Black was born ready.
Okay.
All right, Mrs. Walker, good evening. Good photography. Forgive me for interrupting. Mr. Gazarovski, can you turn your microphone off while Mr. Leoni is speaking to Mrs. Black, please? I'm sure it's not just... Thank you. Mrs. Walker, where were you standing when you took those photographs? As it relates to your western property line?
Different locations. Often, I was in my front yard. Sometimes I was walking down, we have a very long driveway. Sometimes I was walking down the driveway. Sometimes I was, like, close to the property line between the two properties.
Right. When it's close to the property line, between the two properties, 10 feet, 15 feet? Have some idea?
I really don't know, because I'm not, I don't know if anyone is 100% sure where the property, I don't know exactly where it is, but I'm usually on my driveway, where the grass, where the, the, like, leaves.
Dirt driveway that's on the western part of the property. And your house, do you have any idea how far away it is from your western property line?
I, I don't know. I'm not, I know the house is 600 feet off the road, and I would say it's about the same.
Yeah, about 600 feet?
I'm, I'm really, I'm guessing, I don't know, I'm sorry.
That's, that's good enough for me. Are you aware that the applicant is seeking to take all this equipment and put it into a restricted area that is roughly on the eastern, the western side of its property? Are you aware that its application is to correct some of the things that you've observed there?
I don't know what you mean by a restricted area.
Have you seen the site plan that's proposed?
Um, yeah, a while ago.
Okay. Do you understand it?
I think so. I haven't looked at it, like, in the last month.
Would you understand that the equipment that you see at various locations will be stored in that area?
Yeah, I do understand that. And I object to that. Yeah, I do understand that, and I object to that.
Okay, that's your privilege. Do you also know that there is a six-foot fence being proposed to go along the property line?
I am aware of that, and that, that will solve nothing. It might change what I see coming out of my driveway, but based on their history, now who's watching what's going on? Now there's nobody to see what they're doing over there, so to me, that's immaterial.
So if you can't see it, you still object to it, is that what you're saying?
Of course, of course.
And that's because of the sound?
It's because of the sound, it's because of what it will do to our property values.
Are you a real estate expert?
Well, I'm, I'm a broker, I am a real estate broker.
Did you do an analysis of what it would do?
No.
This is a perception of yours, speculation, right?
Correct, correct.
Are you familiar with the zone and what permits in the zone?
Um, I have a, a layman's knowledge of it.
You, you've referred to it as a single-family zone, but it's really a rural development zone, is that not?
It is rural development, but our neighborhood is residential, there's nothing else like it.
On what size lots?
All different sized lots, they're all over an acre.
Right.
Most of them are several.
Are you familiar that this property is in the Pine Lands as well?
Absolutely.
Now, you referred to a subdivision you got, could you describe what the size of the lots were?
They were going to be one-acre lots, fronting on ridge, road.
Just for, just a minute, just for the record, Ms. Black, if you would, please, if you mean yes, please say yes, if you mean no, please say no.
What was I doing?
Uh-huh, no.
Oh, okay, I will.
That won't translate well for the record, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are you aware that, is there sewer and water service to that subdivision?
No, there is not.
Are you aware that if there is not, you need to be in a 3.2 acre?
Not correct, because we would have the upgraded septic systems, which would allow one-acre lots.
That's true, is, was that a proposal of your application?
Yes.
And do you have any idea what that cost?
Those upgraded septics?
I'm going to object to this line of question, I mean, like, she did in fact testify that she had an approval for a subdivision. I'm going to object to Mr. Leoni's pursuit of this line of question. She did testify that she in fact had an approval at one time for a subdivision adjacent to the property, but that she's allowed it to lapse. She testified to that, she's responded to his questions, coming into details with regard to septic systems and the like, at this point of time, it's far beyond her direct testimony.
May I respond to that? It has to do with why she didn't build on the.
What does that have to do with?
Why they didn't use the subdivision, number one, and number two, whether it is of any relevance to this application here.
Well, you didn't object to the fact that she introduced that testimony into the record, what she said, she had a subdivision approval, that's when you should have objected, not now.
No, she got an approval, I'm not objecting to that. Why it wasn't constructed is why I'm.
She testified.
Seeking testimony.
That she got an approval, she did not testify that she sought to.
One at a time, please, thank you.
Is there a question pending?
I want to continue to examine the witness, you're, you're objecting to.
What's the question that you have of her?
My question is, one, is she's aware of what the zoning is in the Pine Lands, and she's answered that.
We've established that, hold on, hold on. Gentlemen, the pending question that was objected to was as to the cost of the septic systems. I'm going to allow the question, but with a little bit of, get to the point.
I don't know what the current cost is, when we had the subdivision approved, I was given numbers somewhere around 40,000 more than a standard septic.
Fair appraisal, and you were still going to proceed with the subdivision?
Of course.
And the, the proposed property that you're referring to as a subdivision, is it abutting the applicant's property?
It, it joins our property, which adjoins theirs. It's, it's now like one big 30-acre piece.
You don't have a subdivision approval on your property?
No, no.
So my question is, is this subdivision abutting the applicant's property?
The answer is no.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And to go back to the other question about the zoning for your, that area, are you aware that public buildings are permitted there, parks are permitted there, other commercial uses are permitted there?
I'm aware of the first two, um, commercial. I'm not aware of commercial uses being allowed there, but commercial is probably what they got approval for, commercial storage. What's going on there now is not what I consider a commercial uh, business, that's more of an industrial property.
But I think your testimony was that the whole area will forever be rural residential.
I don't believe she testified that it'll be forever rural, that, that kind of testimony was never elicited from her.
What is your testimony regarding the development of the area?
I see it developing and continuing to be residential, but things are always changing, especially in Jackson, there's a lot going on, but residential is, is very hot in that area, there's another big development starting soon, and it's going to be an attractive area for residential.
And those areas are served by sewer or not served by sewer?
There is not sewer there now, but I understand that they will be bringing it in for some of that. For some of the currently approved applications or developments.
So, and you also testified that the noise affects you or concerns you?
Yes, it does.
Is your problem?
No, I don't have a problem.
No, I don't have a problem. Am I allowed to stand here?
Stay wherever you want.
Gentlemen. Professionalism, please.
The equipment pictures that you have shown.
Yes.
Your testimony has to do with the fact that they were not approved in 2017 to be where they are. Is that correct?
Correct, that is true.
Do you know if they were approved to be on the property?
Objection to the question, on the property is so amorphous, how could she possibly answer that question? Obviously, they entered the property from time to time.
Are you testifying?
If they're on the property, it's got to be in accordance with the conditions of the approval.
I'm asking this witness if she knows whether that equipment was part of the approval in 2017. Not where it was, but was part of the approval.
My understanding of reading the resolution is that there was to be no equipment on the property except in the building. There was to be no outside storage of equipment and no materials brought to the property.
No materials brought, in transit, you're saying?
Uh, I don't know what you mean by in transit.
That overnight parking?
I think it said no materials, something, no.
No storage of materials on the property?
Correct.
Right, okay. In your observation of the activities on the property, did you see any of this equipment excavating, grating, or since 2017? Recently, because they built the building and I'm sure they had some work done there.
The only time I saw any excavating going on was February of 2019.
Yeah, in connection with their construction.
Well, you're saying they built in 2017, this is 2019.
They got approval in 2017, but, okay, either way. My question is, do you see any of that excavation, grating, going on on the property recently?
I do not.
And your testimony also is that when you were in your home, about 600 feet away from your, approximately, from your property line, you heard noise, is that correct?
Often I hear noise, even when I'm in the house.
Did you measure that noise in any way?
No, I have no means to do that, I just grabbed my phone.
Was that noise during the day or at night?
Always during the day.
Before 6 o'clock, would you say?
I don't think so, I don't think I've ever heard it before 6 o'clock. Are you saying AM or PM?
PM.
Oh, PM, oh, yeah.
It was before?
I can't say for sure, that I can't say.
And what time in the morning would you have heard it?
I've never really paid attention to the times as much so, I, I can't tell you that with certainty.
Now, I think you indicated you have a welding business on your property?
Correct, my husband has Blacky's Welding. His father got a variance for that back in, I think, the 1950s or 60s.
Before the zoning ordinance, is it?
Long time ago, and it's continued to operate since then.
And do you have customers come to that welding shop?
Not really, they mostly use it to keep their equipment there.
Who, who keeps their equipment there?
My husband has inside the building, he has, you know, a welder, compressor inside the building.
Right.
And tools, hand tools, everything.
Who does he weld for, himself?
He mostly works for Clayton's, so he, yeah, so he rarely does work in the shop.
Oh, he goes to the site?
Correct. Once in a while, someone will stop by and want, you know, something fixed, and they'll accommodate them, but that's very rare.
Okay. You testified as to some activity that the applicant was conducting on the adjoining property.
Correct.
And what was that activity?
Well, from what I see, they took the privacy fence that separates their residential part of the property from the industrial part, there's a fence, and they have extended that fence into the adjoining property. They have a tenant in the house, the tenant appears to have use of the front and a small area in the back. They have access to the rest of the, the back of the property, it's accessible from 1435. And they put a driveway in that, I, it looks to me like they use that driveway to sometimes access the property.
With a car or a small pickup or something like that?
Yeah, truck.
And you know what's inside that garage that you?
I have no idea what's in the garage.
Okay, I, I have no further questions of this witness, but I would like to bring up a noise expert as a result of the noise testimony.
I guess when it comes to time, the opportunity. To do that, I intend to put on my planner, so at the conclusion of my case, if he attempts to bring on some type of rebuttal testimony, that's fine.
Yeah, Mr. Gazarovski's in the middle of his case, you'll have to wait to bring up any rebuttal witnesses, presuming that that's permitted. All right, so Mr. Gazarovski, you may proceed, Mr. Leoni, you're going to have to wait.
rebuttal questions they ask of my client. Now, you testified that when you were inside your house, you would hear sounds or noise which you believed were emanating from the adjacent property, correct?
Correct.
And how far would you say your property, your residence is located with regard to the boundary line between the two properties?
I, I'm sorry, I really don't know, I'm not good at measuring.
100 feet, 200 feet?
I would say at least 600.
600 feet?
Yeah, it's far.
Okay, all right, now, you, you are not giving testimony as an expert in the field of noise, are you?
No.
You have no expertise in that field?
I, I do not.
Now, you, you stated that you heard noise while you're inside of the house. Would you, if you, if I represent to you, when considering noise from adjacent property, the level of noise is measured at the property line, so the real question is, what was the noise at the property line 600 feet away from your house? Were you aware of that?
Yeah.
Okay, but you, you never, you never took a reading or did anything to determine what that noise was?
No, I, I did not, and again, if I, if it was really, really loud noise, I might have thought, oh, maybe I should get a decibel meter or something, but it's not the fact that it's loud, it's that it's
Continuous.
annoying and continuous and clanging and banging and humming and.
People say that I'm annoying, they don't need a meter to determine that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
For the record, Mr. Gazarovski, your statement that the noise is measured at the property line is an inaccurate statement. And our noise expert will be.
If you think it's an inaccurate statement, why don't you show me the ordinance and say where it says something different?
The rebuttal witness will do that.
Excuse, I, I am going, I'm going, I'm going to guide the board. That Mr. Gazarovski's statements are not evidence and they should be judged accordingly.
Yeah, I'm not clear, am I permitted to put my rebuttal witness on now?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Gazarovski's in the middle of his case.
Through the chair? Can we ask the witness a question?
Yes, Mrs. Black?
Hello, Ms. Black. Ms. Black, you used the word continuous to describe what you heard as quote-unquote noise emanating from your neighbor. Would you elaborate on what you mean by continuous, please?
I, okay, it's not like continuous 24 hours a day, but it's, sometimes I'll hear it for an hour, sometimes it's for 20 minutes, sometimes it's just clanging and banging for a minute. It, it varies day to day, it's not consistent, but it's not, I'm not saying that it's a 24, you know, or eight hours a day, I'm hearing this noise, but I'm hearing it enough and it's just not what you expect to hear in a neighborhood or in a residential area.
All right, that helps, but perhaps frequency, and what I'm driving at, is it day in and day out, or is it something other?
No, I would say most days there's something. I can't say every day, but most days there's some kind of noise going on and I, you know, I don't go out there and I don't stand there waiting for it to videotape it or, or make a clip of it, but often I do, just to get like a representation to show you of what I'm hearing. You're welcome.
Mrs. Black, just one other question, did you ever notify the township either through the zoning officer seeking enforcement of the resolution?
I did, it was fairly recently, and I just want to give you a little bit of history on why we didn't earlier. As I said, we didn't attend the hearing in 2017 because it looked benign, it looked like, okay, they're putting up a pole barn, we're good with that. Right away, they started bringing in other stuff, right away. And my husband and I said to ourselves, holy mackerel, we, we screwed up not going to that hearing. We assumed all along that somehow all of this got approved, why else would they be immediately defying the, the, the ground rules of the board?
So you did notify the township?
We did, but not, not in the beginning, we did within the past.
Did you get any response from the township?
Yes, they told me that they assessed a fine, I think of $500, and they took a couple pictures, then I.
When was that? Roughly?
I'm going to say maybe six months to a year ago, I don't really remember.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you want me to answer about the follow-up or you're okay? Okay, thank you.
I, I believe oh two was a notice, I believe oh two was notice of violation from the, from the code enforcement, correct? Mark that oh four.
Mark that '04, just
Is that the only response that you've gotten from the township? How many times have you contacted the township relative to the violations?
Well, that one time I did. And then when I followed up with them to see what happened as a result of it, I was told in an email that they, nothing will happen because they have a pending application before the board. So because the application is pending, they're not going to follow up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Redirect the question. Did the rubles ever offer to meet with you to discuss any of your complaints?
She did.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Leoni, I didn't hear that. I apologize.
I said, did the rubles ever offer to meet with the blacks to address any of their complaints?
Did they ever offer to meet with her? They initiated the meeting, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes, she did send us a letter asking, when we first came and objected, sent us a letter asking if we would meet to discuss. But in our opinion, there's nothing to discuss. I mean, they're clearly not going to, because we don't like it, just clean it up. I didn't feel there was any need to discuss it. What could we have, what terms could we have come to? I didn't see any use. I'm sorry.
You declined to?
We did, yes, we declined.
Thank you.
They respectfully declined.
Passively, respectfully declined, yes.
Thank you.
They respectfully asked.
Am I through?
I'm done with you, yes.
Any additional questions for this witness?
Yes? I assume that the photographs that you took and the video that you took were taken with your phone?
Correct.
And is that an iPhone?
It is.
Just as an FYI, there are dozens of decibel meters free that you can download from the iCloud store and record them.
Thank you. Again, it's not really a decibel issue for me. It's a, it's just the constant sounds, the annoying sound.
So for the, just FYI for the board, those apps are not scientific instruments. They cannot be relied upon. They're not accurate, and they cannot be admitted as evidence. So while they exist, they're for entertainment purposes only for the most part, and any sound consultant will tell you that. So just FYI.
Any additional questions for Mrs. Black? All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Just before This time, I would like to call
It's after nine o'clock, so we're just going to take a five-minute break.
Ron, before you get started, I do have one announcement to make. Mr. Pape, if you want to come forward.
Mr. Gazarovski.
All right. Mr. Pape, you want to come forward? Mr. Pape has been waiting around, but it's clear to me that we are not going to finish this application by the end of the evening. So as a courtesy to Mr. Pape and his professionals, the board has determined that we're going to reschedule application number two, based upon the fact that we are not going to reach it tonight. So, Mr. Pape, you want to enter your appearance, please?
Jared Pape, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. This is application number two, the Keebler Family Trust, variance number three-three-nine-five-one, block ninety-seven-oh-two, lot twenty. This application was listed this evening. It was carried from the December sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. This will be carried with consent from both the board and the applicant to January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. This application will be listed as number one on that particular agenda, based upon my review. And the applicant has waived time, and no additional notice will be required. Is that your understanding?
It is. Thank you.
Very good. So, application number two, the Keebler Family Trust, variance three-three-nine-five-one, block ninety-seven-oh-two, lot twenty, will be carried to the January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting. No further notice will be required from the applicant, and the applicant has waived time. So any members of the public who are here from that application, again, I, on behalf of the board, offer my sincerest apologies. But it has become clear that we will not be finishing this application this evening.
Thank you.
With that said, we'll move back to application number one. Mr. Gazarovski, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Turley. Before I proceed with my last witness, who is Gordon Gemma, a licensed professional planner, I know that there is a person in the audience who wishes to present some very brief testimony. I am not calling her as a witness, but she asked that she be able to speak. Her name is Felicia Finn. So if she's in the audience, if she would come forward.
Uh, hold on one second. You're not calling her as a witness?
No, I'm not.
Then we're gonna wait till public comment?
For public comment?
That's correct.
Okay, we'll hold it for public comment.
We have procedure, and we're gonna follow it.
I'll call her for public comment. Let me proceed forward of Mr. Gemma. Mr.?
Mr. Gemma, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony information questions or comments? Are you about to present before the board or represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, and for the record, Gordon Gemma, G-E-M-M-A, sixty-eight Senega Place, Oceanport, New Jersey.
And you're a professional planner?
Yes, sir.
Would you give the board the benefit of your credentials, please?
I'm a licensed professional planner and have been as such since nineteen eighty-seven. In the context of being a professional planner, I've testified in front of hundreds of boards and accepted as a planner before the courts of the state of New Jersey. I've testified in front of the state assembly, and I've been here a few times.
This board accepts your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you. Mr. Gemma, you were retained by me to give professional testimony for this board, were you not?
Yes, sir.
And as a result of my retaining you, did you in fact visit the property site in question?
Yes.
Did you also review the minutes as well as some of the transcripts of prior hearings?
Yes.
Now, are you prepared to give professional testimony today with regard to your impression and your opinion with regard to this proposed use?
Yes.
Rather than take you through it step by step, I would like you to just simply present your testimony as you have on other occasions as well.
Sure. And I've been here through most of the meetings. I read the resolution of two thousand seventeen. I read the ordinances. I read a two thousand and nine master plan, the two thousand and twenty-three master plan amendment. And just for the record, even though it's been discussed, but there might be some confusion, the property is in the RD one zone. The uses that are permitted in the RD one zone are not commercial and retail uses. They are agricultural, single-family detached, houses of worship, parks, public buildings, or community recreation centers for age-restricted communities. That's what's permitted in the RD one zone. So just to be clear about that, it does not permit forestry. It does not permit mining, either onsite or offsite. And as we discuss later, that the use that's, the variance that's required is a D-one variance, I think, given the applicant's plan or acknowledged. That's the relief that they're seeking. And so, before I get to the test, I want to just go through a few things that are in your ordinance that I think you should be cognizant of. And the first thing in your ordinance is that section two-four-four dash sixty-seven clearly indicates that this property is in, the pinelands is appropriate for pinelands commission review, once it was not, now it is. And that's an indication of how maybe this town is treating this type of property. Second, of how this town is treating this type of property. You're welcome, and I'll try to go slower. I'm cognizant of the time. I'm trying to... I'm trying. Thank you. There you go. You're welcome. I've never been asked to speak louder. Section two-four-four dash one-seven-six point two contains a statement. And that statement says that all uses not expressly permitted in any given district are expressly prohibited. That's not just a statement about whether a use is required. It's a statement of intent. Not every ordinance in every town in New Jersey has that statement. What it means is that you've considered things throughout your zoning ordinance, and you've said, if I didn't say it's permitted, it's not omitted, it's prohibited. If it's permitted, it's prohibited. And that's a statement of intent. And then finally, I want to go through a few things that you do permit. Section two-four-four dash six defines a truck terminal. And a truck terminal is defined as, quote, "A location at which the prime purpose or use is the parking and/or servicing of trucks which transport goods or materials not produced, received, for sale, warehoused, or used in manufacturing at that location." What the applicant has testified is similar to a truck terminal. That's important because Jackson permits truck terminals. Not here, but other places. Similarly, although not defined, Jackson also permits contractor's yards. Again, not here, but in other locations. And finally, I'd ask you to consider in your ordinances that you have specific definitions of two-four-four dash one-ninety-seven of how do you park non-residential vehicles? And you have specific definitions. And you talk about you have to have stalls. You have to have descriptions. You have to have so many that are permitted. And you go through great detail about that. And then you say at the end of that, if there is any change of this, then that's not permitted, and you've got to go back in front of the board. You try to control that. The applicant has a site plan in front of you. The thing that they don't show you in that applicant, in that site plan, is where they're gonna park everything. They don't have those stalls lined up. They're gonna put them over there. So there's a reason you did that, because you want to have control, and you don't want to have that sprawl. And there's something else, and that is paragraph seven of the Statement of Operations that the applicant gave you said that tractors, as well as other equipment, may not exceed fifteen at any one time. You saw photos. What's on that property? You saw at one time eight tractors. You saw a lot of equipment. I proffer it was more than fifteen. More importantly, you saw a photo of the yard in Tom's River that they want to bring here. Now, I can't count very fast, very well, but I would lay odds between what was shown on that aerial and what existed in those photos you saw is more than fifteen. And that's really what you're putting or allowing to be permitted to be put here. So I'll ask you to consider that. And now, why does it matter that in fact you may allow these types of uses in other locations? And we'll discuss this in greater detail about the issue of particular suitability. But the New Jersey Supreme Court, in a case called Price v. Himeji, two NJ, H-I-M-E-J-I, Himeji? I'm gonna turn to our jurist over there and ask him if I got it right. I think it's Himeji.
Thanks. Himeji.
Himeji, thank you. Two NJ, two sixty-three, said that a board's analysis of alternative locations where the use may be permitted is relevant. So keep that in mind when we get to the issue of, is this permitted someplace else? And more importantly, is it not permitted here? And finally, I took a look at the master plan. And the master plan was adopted in two thousand and nine, and in two thousand and twenty-three was an amendment in the middle of this application. And you know what it said the objective was in the middle of this application? It said the objective was to provide for limited non-residential development in residential zones while protecting the existing character of the neighborhood. And I wonder what they were thinking of when they put that amendment in mind just this year. Finally, two thousand and nine master plan. What does that say? Well, that says there's a few goals and objectives of your master plan. And one objective of the master plan, in the land use element, page G-two, says it's to achieve a pattern of mixed land uses that achieve various community planning objectives. Sounds pretty good. But it says, objective number one, it's an objective to direct growth in suitable areas and away from ones appropriate for resource protection. We'll get to that in a second. Objective number two, it says that, objective to provide economic development and local employment area, employment opportunities in areas well-suited for that development. So it said, we want to do these things, but it kept on caveating it, in areas well-suited for that development. In two thousand and twenty-three, it made it clear, in residential areas, if you're gonna impact the residential character, that's not well-suited for that development. I ask you to look at some of the maps that they have in your master plan, and you can make a determination about how you consider things. The first map I have for you is simply from your master plan, map LU two.
LU two.
LU two. LU two. I'll give one to Mr. Leoni. What does LU two show? Let's feel it to be simple. Property is clearly in the RD one zone. Surrounding the property in the RD one zone is your pinelands protection area and all your pinelands area. Pinelands protection area and all your pinelands areas. So LU one in two thousand and nine said, look at this property. Look what surrounds it. You also have another map, and that's map C-eight. That's your critical area map. Also from your master plan of two thousand and nine. What does CH show? CH shows that across the street have a critical area. Now, C-eight cannot be used to infer what exists upon the applicant's property. That's not fair, and it's not appropriate. But what is fair and is appropriate is to say that there are critical areas near this property. So when you look at the uses that the applicant is seeking to permit on this property, you have to consider it in the context of the surrounding zone and the proximity of your critical areas. So now let's go to the standard of proof. John did a great job, as he always does, in articulating the standard of proof for use variance. John didn't do such a good job in talking about some of the cases that interpreted that standard of proof. I'd like to. One case, famous case called Kinderkamak Road Associates v. Mayor of Cold Oradel, four-twenty-one NJ Super. And that said that, quote, "Use variances should be granted sparingly and with great caution." The court went on to say, quote, "Because of legislative preference for municipal land use, planning by ordinance rather than variance, use variances may only be granted in exceptional circumstances." So you have to ask yourself, in that standard of proof, if someone wants to put a essentially, what could be defined as a truck stop in a residential zone, is that the exceptional circumstance that the court in Kinderkamak and other cases were thinking of? And that's really what you have to consider in the context of that weighing they ask you to do. And this issue about amending a prior approval. Now, I know this is a new application, but in amending a prior approval, you have to ask yourself, what changed? Why are they back in front of you? Now, normally, there's zoning and planning reasons. The area changed. The town adopted a new zone. The only thing that changed here is the applicant changed. Well, that may be important to the applicant. That's not a purpose of zoning. That's not a reason. That's personal to an applicant on a piece of property, not to an area that hasn't changed, not to a zone that hasn't changed. So you've got to look at it in that context. And finally, when it comes to the burden of proof, we'll get to, it's up to the applicant, not the objector, to say it doesn't have a substantial detrimental impact in terms of noise, odor, runoff on the adjacent property. It's up to the applicant, not the objector, to say it doesn't have a substantial detrimental impact upon the zone plan. It's not, did you break the zone plan? It's not, did you fracture it? It doesn't have a substantial detrimental impact. And you have to look at your zone plan and your master plan, and what did they say? And if you have a substantial detrimental impact upon what you said are your goals and objectives, are your intent as of this summer, then it's substantial detrimental impact. So let's go through this. John, when he spoke about the purposes of zoning, that's the first step. He brought up subsection G, I, and M of section two of the MLUL. Now, subsection G is interesting. There was a certain judge in Middlesex County who held a case called Stupus v. Edison Zoning Board of Adjustment that was affirmed by the appellate division. And that judge made a few good points about what it means to look at subsection G. And the subsection G, if you recollect, is you've got to provide sufficient space in a variety of locations for commercial uses. And first, the court asked whether and where other similar uses may be in the area in order to assess the need. There hasn't been any determination that this area, this use is needed in this location to meet that need. In fact, it's the contrary. The applicant has testified, they go throughout the state, the tri-state area. So what is the specialness in this area, in this location? The other thing that this jurist did in Middlesex County is said that, shameless pandering, I know, Ryan, that they did in this one was, how does this meet the needs of all the residents of the state of New Jersey? That is in subsection G. The applicant certainly is meeting its needs, which is important for the applicant. We get it. But it doesn't meet the criteria as set forth in subsection G to show that this use here meets the needs of all the residents of the state of New Jersey. So unless the applicant can make a showing that somehow this use on this location meets those needs, doesn't meet subsection G. Subsection I, Mind v. Burbage, aesthetic improvements. And the applicant said, I'm making it look better. I'm putting all these things on the property. I'm making all these improvements. The applicant also said, I'm also parking a lot of trucks, commercial trucks, in and around here. Now, in a residential zone that clearly my client can see from her property. Now, it's true, building one big building may hide some things, but it doesn't hide everything. It wasn't intended to hide everything. In fact, you have to ask, is this actually advancing a purpose of zoning by making it look better or making it worse? Remember, the applicant's not just asking you to build a big building. The applicant is asking you for use to store commercial vehicles on this property, not in the big building. So I don't know how that quite advances a purpose of zoning. And finally, M. M talks about, that's the clause that was put in about trying to make the, everything of, I'm trying to make sure I got it right for M. Basically, it talks about... M is making the argument that encourage coordination of various public and private uses in order to be efficient. That was M. I know there was something, sir. And so, the applicant's saying, well, look, obviously, you now, I have my business that's not permitted in the zone. And I want to be able to store things here that are not permitted in the zone. That's an efficient public and private use. That's not quite what they were saying. When they meant M about the efficiency of public and private, they were talking about things like residential site improvement standards, trying to make development more efficient, not, how do I have a non-permitted use, and then I add more things to my non-permitted use? If that were true, everyone who had a commercial property, who owned property, had a commercial building, or a residential building, I'm sorry, who would then say, I want to store my commercial trucks on my residential area, because it's more efficient for me. It's not efficiency for the applicant. It's efficiency for the purposes of zoning. And here, this just doesn't do it. You can't use those. So when it comes to the issue of the purposes of zoning, I don't think they met the burden. They haven't advanced a purpose of zoning. They advanced the purpose of how to meet their business needs, but that's not a purpose of zoning. And then finally, you go to the issue of particular suitability. The applicant says, well, it's a big piece of property, six point one acres. My client has thirty acres. Doesn't mean that they should be able to permit commercial uses on there. In fact, a lot of the properties there are big. Look at the tax map. This property is no different than a lot of them there. In fact, it's the same size of some of them. So it's not particularly suitable. It's big. It's part of what the RD one wants. They want big lots that are residential, not commercial. One of the things they talked about in terms of particular suitability is it wouldn't have an adverse impact. When I gave you those maps, and particularly the critical area map, the issue is, is this the location to have a use? Where you're gonna have fifty-five gallon drums? Where you're gonna maintain, even with the best... going to maintain, even with the best intent, these big vehicles? Are you going to put it here in the pine lands? That's a critical area, or not? And it seems to me that of all the areas of particularly suitable, this ain't one of them. In fact, it's particularly not suitable to have this type of use in this location. And finally, let's go to the issue of the negative criteria. The applicant, I'm not going to repeat what Vicki testified to. You have to look at the context and character of residential neighborhood. And she showed you pictures that she could see from her property. You heard what she heard, and it's not every day. And the applicant made a point, "Look, they can have construction activities." And they're right. You can have construction activities in a residential zone, and that would be a land. It would begin on a certain day, and it would end on a certain day. But she built the structure. It doesn't go on infinitum as long as the use is there. And that's the real concern. So it may not be something that meets certain levels, but it's the same industrial sound from an industrial area that you hear with banging and trucks going back and forth. That's just noise. I haven't even gotten to the issue. You saw that one tractor with the plume of smoke coming out of it. That's pollutants. You have runoff, no matter how well-maintained it is. So those are the adverse impacts you potentially have from living next to this type of facility in a residential area. There's that, within the context and character of a residential area. There's been discussion about the installation of stormwater system, or when you add about suspended solids and other fuels coming from, fluids coming from parked vehicles or vehicles that are being worked on, you have to wonder, is that sufficient? Is it being maintained? How does it impact ecosystem? Is, what type of, you know, Mr. Leoni asked, does this have an enhanced septic facility to it? Well, I would proffer, does this stormwater have an enhanced biofilters to it? You've got to go through a little more detail than that to be able to say it can handle commercial runoff. You haven't done that. There was also a discussion that 55-gallon drums being stored on the property. There wasn't a discussion how they can be maintained, how they can be disposed of, who does that, how many times, how many 55-gallon drums? What happens when they leak? Are they on a pad? But you know, they're going to be there. And it makes sense, because the use is a use that, you need that type of stuff. The question is, is it this location? So all that goes to the issue of the negative substantial detrimental impact upon the neighborhood. Then you go to the zone plan. Now, they brought up a point. They said, "Well, agriculture is permitted here. You can always farm." Agriculture is permitted here. You can always farm.
Sorry, sir.
Go ahead.
Can you just talk slower?
Slower.
I can't make out some of your words.
Okay, well, not a problem. I make more sense when you can understand me. At least, my wife tells me that. Going to the second prong of the negative criteria, which talks about the intent and purpose on the zone plan. And they made a point that agriculture is permitted here. That's true. Agriculture is a permitted use. You produce agriculture on the property. You don't store equipment to harvest agriculture and then harvest it from someplace else. That's not what they were saying. They said, "If you're going to grow things on here, then you can grow things on here." There was a question about forestry, must have been omitted. After all, why would they have forestry? Agriculture, if not forestry? Well, two things. Forestry is not defined in your ordinance, but your ordinance does cross-reference the Pine Lands Act. And so what does forestry mean? Forestry means the planting, cultivating, and harvesting of trees for the production of wood products, including firewood or for forest health. Now, it's not being done here. Forestry. Forestry is being done someplace else, but they're storing equipment here so they can go forestry someplace else. So you can't make the analogy that this is similar to agriculture, but it's not forestry as defined in what Jackson uses as the definition for forestry. So basically, the applicant's asking to store and maintain equipment, some in a building, some outside of the building. That's permitted someplace else in your zone and not here. The master plan looked at that and said, "Maintain the residential character." So from my opinion, you can't argue it doesn't have a substantial detrimental impact upon the intent and purpose of your zone plan, because it does. And then, there's that Medici case that John discussed and the reconciliation. How do you balance this? How do I reconcile that they don't permit this in the zone? And the answer is, you don't. Because they didn't miss it. They didn't not think about it. They didn't not be concerned about the economic, the environmental impact. They were. They have it all in your master plan. So I don't think you can do the reconciliation. I don't think you can say that it was ignored. It wasn't. I don't think you can analogize it to permitted uses. They're not. So for all those reasons, I don't believe this applicant has met its burden of proof that the court talked about an exceptional circumstance is needed in order for you to find that the use variance that you're seeking is warranted. I have nothing else.
I'm sorry. I have no questions, further questions of my goodness.
You have no further questions?
I have no further questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Leoni?
Thank you. Mr. Gemma, you referred to the zoning ordinance that applies to this property, which is RD1, and all the uses permitted in the pine lands area, development zone, right? Pine lands village zone, which would be Section 244-87. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay. And is it your testimony that only residential is permitted?
No, that was not my testimony.
And your testimony was that commercial was not?
That's correct.
I call your attention to paragraph B1 of the Pine Lands Village Zone. It says agricultural, commercial establishments. Is that a commercial establishment?
An agricultural, commercial establishment.
But it is a commercial establishment, is it not?
Well, let's define what that means. Well, let's define what that means.
Yes or no? Is it a commercial?
It uses the word "commercial."
Okay. I'll go on. Section B4, private garage space for storage of motor vehicles. Is that commercial?
It doesn't have to be.
Doesn't have to be, but it can be, right?
Well, private garage space for the storage of motor vehicles. You're going to have to look at what motor vehicle is defined as.
Okay.
So motor vehicle, in my mind...
But it's not residential?
No, it could be residential. Steve, it could be residential.
It could be, but it doesn't have to be.
It may be many things, but it doesn't necessarily have to be commercial.
All right. You've answered that question. Then, finally, it has as a conditional use, resource extraction, does it not?
As a conditional use, meeting certain conditions.
So that's not residential either?
That's not a permitted use either.
Pardon?
It's not permitted. It's a conditional.
It is permitted, but you have conditions.
Well, let's be clear. I said, "What were the permitted use?" This is a conditional use. So resource extraction is a conditional use.
And conditional uses are not permitted?
If they meet the conditions, then it's a conditionally permitted use.
Thank you. Good. Okay. You've been to the property?
Yes. Well, I take it back. I've been to my client's property, not to your client's property.
Right. How often have you been there?
I've been there twice since this application began.
How often have you been to the area surrounding the property in the RD1 zone?
Up and down the road. I've been there twice since this application began.
You see other commercial establishments in other areas of the RD1?
I can't tell what is and is not the beginning and the end of the RD1, Steve. I did see the sign for the welder, my client's property. I did see across the street, the horse farm. Further down the road, there were other uses, but I couldn't tell where that exactly ended or began. So I couldn't testify with specificity.
Did you observe any subdivisions of residential houses?
Yes.
Let me finish the question.
Go ahead.
Of residential houses on 1-acre lots or 3.2-acre lots in this zone?
Again, Steve, I was, I saw residential subdivisions. I wasn't able to articulate what size the lots were. I guess observing.
Were they in the zone?
I don't know, Steve. I said, I saw in the area. I couldn't tell with specificity whether they were in the zone or not.
All right. You testified that the applicant was relocating its operation from Tom's River to this zone.
That's what I understand the applicant testified to.
No. You, can you quote that someplace?
You have to go back through the, I've sat here through the months of this. In part of when the applicant was here, I believe the applicant indicated, at least my recollection is, without having a transcript in front of me, that they intended to close the Tom's River location and relocate there.
I'll correct you. That's not her testimony.
Then you may correct me, and I stand corrected if you could point to the same transcript you're referring to.
Thank you.
You're pointing to the transcript? You're pointing to the transcript of the testimony?
I'm not, I'm not.
I'm sorry, your point, I said, "I'd be happy to be corrected if you could point to the transcript."
No, I'm telling you that.
Okay, then, Steve, I trust you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any public sewer in the RD1 zone?
I am not aware.
Pardon?
I am not aware.
You're not aware?
I am not aware. Which doesn't mean there's...
You don't know that there is, but you don't know that there isn't.
I am not aware either way.
Why wouldn't you study that as part of your overall?
Because it wasn't relevant to my testimony.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to call my planner up to comment on this testimony.
Mr. Gaziravsky, do you have any redirect?
I have no redirect.
Okay. Are you finished with your case?
I am finished.
Hold on. Timeout. Do the board members have any questions for this witness?
Mr. Gemma, I think you've answered this question already, but I had asked Mr. Taikana, I hope I pronounced that correctly, Taikina. I asked him this question. What use is permitted in the RD1 zone that closely resembles the proposed use? And his answer was agricultural. Can you respond to that? Do you have any, you have any answer to that question?
Sure. The answer to the question is none. And the reason for that is there is a definition of agricultural use. And the definition of agricultural use says it is, quote, "A land use to derive income from the production of crops and/or raising of livestock. No crops or livestock is being produced or grown upon this property." You cannot make that analogy.
You found that, you found that in the definitions, correct?
That is in the definitions as defined in Section 244-6 of Jackson Township.
Okay. I also asked Mr. Taikina about the relative to the positive criteria, and he talked about the military bases across the street. Do you have any idea how far McGuire or Lakehurst Naval Air Station is from this site?
I don't have an exact definition of how far it is from the site, but I fail to see how the proximity for that has anything to do with this site. Now, to be fair, what John meant was that they need to clear, I think John was talking about the airfields. They need to clear the hazard zones in front of the airfields when the planes land, which is true. They need to do that. But there's no reason why they can't do that by storing the equipment someplace else. So I found out to be a non-sequitur.
All right. Other things that Mr. Taikina mentioned was that he equated forestry use, forestry use to an agricultural use. Do you agree with that?
I agree that the definition of forestry use is similar only in the context that it has to be done on-site. And it's defined as the planting, cultivating, and harvesting of trees for the production of wood products, including firewood and/or for forest health on the property. That's not being done here.
Okay. One other comment I asked him to address was the issue of storage versus parking. And he equated, I think his words were, "They're synonymous." But I said, "Well, one can be a principal use and at the same time be an accessory use." So parking could be a principal use, parking could be an accessory use. Would you equate storage and parking as being equal?
No. In fact, you, the town defines it, what a truck terminal is. And it says, "A truck terminal is defined," and again, 244-6. Location at which the primary purpose or use is parking and/or servicing of trucks, and/or servicing of trucks, which trucks transport goods or materials not produced, received for sale, warehoused, or used in manufacturing at that location. In my opinion, this is a truck terminal.
Okay, I just have two further questions. One is on the enhanced quality of proof. I believe Mr. Taikina had indicated that essentially, and I'm paraphrasing his testimony, and if he's coming back again, I guess he can address it. My notes indicate that his words were that it was an oversight by the governing body because of the evolution of these various uses, and that the governing body does not understand the nuance uses in rural areas. Can you comment on his response?
Sure. One, truck terminals are not an oversight. They're permitted someplace else. Two, in the summer of this year, the governing body made a determination about what should or should not happen in residential zones when they amended the master plan. And they said, when they amended the master plan, that an objective is to provide for limited, non-residential development in residential zones while protecting the existing character of the neighborhood. They didn't ignore it. They focused on it. They said, "Don't disturb the residential character of residential zones." Hard for me to say they ignored it.
I guess my last comment or question is going to be this. This board in 2017 granted a use variance. So this applicant is allowed to continue the use as approved back in 2017, but limited, obviously, to non-maintenance, obviously, to storage indoors, things of that nature. How different, is there a difference in your mind between what's being sought here and what was previously approved? Obviously, the obvious differences are maintenance, additional building, but I'm having some difficulty with the additional building concept because there's a chicken coop there that can be used, or is supposed to be used for storage. So all they're doing is replacing that building with storage. What's the difference?
I would proffer, one, that this is a bit bigger than a chicken coop.
I'm sorry?
I would proffer that this is a bit bigger than a chicken coop for what's being proposed. But more importantly, when they discuss this, they talked about 15 vehicles. If the vehicles were to be stored inside and there was no maintenance, I think you're right. But the vehicles are not intended to be stored inside, and they intend to have maintenance, and they intend to have 55-gallon drums to maintain it, and they intend to put in a wash system. So all those things are far and away what was approved in 2017.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for this witness?
Thank you.
My calling, Mr. Gemma, as a witness, he is my last witness, and that, in fact, concludes the objector's case.
Okay. Mr. Leoni, do you have an application?
Might I ask one question, please? What time does this board intend to conclude this meeting?
We normally take testimony until 10:30, but obviously, there are members of the public. They've sat here graciously, we will let them speak. But I guess we'll let Mr. Leonie. He indicated earlier he had some additional information he wanted to provide.
I think we can honor the board's request to complete our application by 10:30. Whether you deliberate at that point after word or defer, that's up to you.
We're still going to open to the public.
Pardon?
We're still going to open to the public.
Yeah, okay.
So, my question to you, Mr. Leonie, is do you have an application for the board?
I have two rebuttal witnesses I'd like to put.
May I make one comment? And I appreciate the board's attention to this particular case, but I have an hour and a half drive home, so I would just like you to consider that. Thank you.
Mr. Leonie? Can I go forward? Is there another public objector here?
What's that?
Is there someone else from the public that wants to speak?
Yes, did you want to speak on the, an objection?
Are we going to hear the rebuttal witness first?
Hold on. That's the application I'm looking for. Are you looking to bring your rebuttal witnesses up?
Yes.
All right. Which witnesses do you want to present first?
I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy.
Which witness did you want to present first?
I have a noise expert I would like to put up, and I have the planner to rebut some of this testimony.
I will ask the question again, which witness did you want to bring up first?
Noise expert.
If there's no objection, proceed.
Mr. Doti?
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board or represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. If you would please state your name, spell your last, provide your affiliation, and your credentials, please.
I'm Norman Doti, D-O-T-T-I. I'm with Russell Acoustics in Forkett River. I'm a consulting acoustical engineer.
Madam Chairlady, I would like to voice my objection to the call. I'm sorry?
I'd like to establish his credentials on the record before we address your objection.
Okay.
Thank you.
I am a graduate from Stevenson Institute of Technology. My mechanical engineering degree, I have a master's from NJIT. I have a dozen postgraduate courses in acoustics. I'm an appointed member to the State Noise Control Council by the governor. We, that body writes the noise regulations and other related things for the state, DEP. I have testified at local boards such as this municipal court, state court, and federal court in New Jersey, throughout New Jersey, as an expert.
I'm sorry, forgive me. This board accepts your credentials, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gazarovski, we'll hear your objection now.
Yes. Let me just first state for the record that I do know Mr. Doti. I have appeared before with him on several occasions. I do not for one second question his qualifications. I don't question his good intentions. But the applicant has concluded his case. The objector stated that she is not alleging that the applicant is in fact violating any noise ordinance. If in fact he intended to call Mr. Doti at any point in time, it should have been when he was presenting his case. He's being called as a rebuttal witness. A rebuttal to what?
Mr. Leonie?
Rebuttal to two facts. One, there's been an allegation that there's a noise violation existing, and there's no such violation. And Mr. Doti can testify as to what is required to be in violation of the noise ordinances. And second, notwithstanding the testimony of Mrs. Black, she testified she was near the property line as to the noise she heard. And there is a fact, there is a regulation that deals with where you measure noise, number one. And she testified that she didn't have any kind of a equipment to do that. So I think it's important for us to be able to rebut the testimony as to, or disregard any testimony as to noise.
Mr. Leonie, wasn't the testimony of the witness in a lay capacity as to what she can and cannot hear? That was me. The board's attorney.
Sorry.
Mr. Murphy, I didn't see.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what.
The question that I.
I didn't hear the questions.
The question that I had for Mr. Leonie was, isn't the testimony of the witness in a lay capacity as to what she can and cannot hear from the premise, from her own premises? I didn't hear any expert testimony, I just, I heard testimony as to what the lay witness could and could not hear.
So I would move that all of her testimony regarding noise be disregarded.
On what basis?
On the basis that she's not an expert, she measured it at the wrong location, and she alleges there's a violation, and there's no violation.
She never testified that she ever measured anything. She said very clearly she did not use a device. So Mr. Leonie's comment that she measured it is just not, not in the record. Secondly, I make my position now, that is my position, that when you're measuring noise from an adjoining property, you measure it at the property line. She did not testify, she listened to it at the property line. She did not testify she measured at the property line. This was an observation on her part, which might quite frankly, a more appropriate response could come from the planner, but not from Mr. Doti, who is in fact a highly respected noise expert and noise consultant.
Mr. Leonie, would you agree that you actually raised noise during your direct examination of the applicant herself?
I did not because of several factors that I appreciate the board considering. And that was, this application has been heard over a year period of time. The November scheduled date, Mr. Doti was not available. I did not ask for an adjournment. We sought to move forward to complete the application as much as we could. And unless there was testimony tonight about noise, I didn't intend to bring Mr. Doti in.
Mr. Leonie, respectfully, I do in fact specifically recall testimony by the applicant herself as to the noises that she heard from, she can hear from her property. Isn't that accurate?
The, my witness, Mrs. DeRueval, testified as to what the ordinances would be, were, both state and municipal, and that she would comply with them.
But she also testified as to, my recollection.
Not as an expert.
I am not in possession of the transcript. However, I agree with you, she did not testify as an expert.
Right.
However, she did testify as to the noise that she could hear from her property. Specifically, as it relates to, as I recall it, the joint base. And the truck traffic.
She testified that, yeah, absolutely. But she also testified that, in her opinion, she did not violate any noise ordinances.
I don't think there's any allegation that there was, that there are noise ordinance violations. From what, my recollection of the test, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, and Mr. Gazarovski, I'm going to straight, I'm going to ask you straight. At any point, have you alleged that there's a noise violation in relation to this property?
We have not made an allegation of there being a noise violation. We have not retained a noise consultant to take measurements and make a complaint. You know, and I was here when Mr. Doti, I believe you might have been present at one prior time. Mr. Leonie, for whatever the reason may be, chose not to call him as his witness. And he's claiming now that he's calling him as a rebuttal witness. A rebuttal to what? Mrs., my client was very, very clear as to what she heard. The board would take that into consideration as to whether or not that particular activity, activity, doesn't satisfy the criteria for the granting of a use variance. I mean, calling Mr. Doti at this point, a rebuttal to what? Rebuttal to a humming sound?
Mr. Leonie, Mr. Gazarovski, this question is for you. Mr. Leonie has alleged that there has been an allegation made by the objector that there was a noise violation, or a noise violation that is currently pending in relation to the property. I do, I personally do not recall hearing that testimony.
I don't, I specifically, and I quite frankly, I didn't coach my witness. She said very specifically she was not alleging that there was a noise violation. She just said she heard noise.
May I comment on that, please?
Yes, Mr. Leonie, please do.
My recollection is her testimony was she made a complaint to the zoning department of noise. And that she, she did that a year ago or so, no follow-up other than there was a noise viola, there was a violation issue.
There is a, it is a well-established fact, Mr. Leonie, that there is a notice of violation that is currently pending in relation to this property. The testimony, as I recall it, was that the notice of violation has not yet been dealt with because of the pending application. I don't recall noise being mentioned at all in relation to that notice of violation. I don't. And quite frankly, again, from my perspective, and Mr. Doti, I appreciate you being here, and this is certainly not a reflection on you. I've never had the pleasure of listening to you testify, but I have read transcripts where you have testified. And certainly, I agree with Mr. Gazarovski and Mr. Leonie that you are well-qualified to testify on it as an expert in noise. But I don't believe that a rebuttal witness as to the observations of a lay witness in terms of what she can and cannot hear from her property require the expert rebuttal from Mr. Doti. I don't see a basis under the applicable standard to allow that. You had brought noise into this application during your case in chief, Mr. Leonie. You had the opportunity to call this expert witness as part of your case in chief if you thought that noise was going to be an issue. Mr. Gazarovski has not called an expert witness to establish anything related to noise. There's been no allegation, no indication, no testimony, no evidence submitted that indicates that, that the objector has measured noise. All the, all the applicant has testified to, I'm sorry, strike that. All the objector has testified to, from my perspective, and from the testimony that I have sat through, is her observations as to the noise that she can hear from the property. I don't believe that expert rebuttal is warranted. I don't, I, there's nothing to, I concur with Mr. Gazarovski. As far as I can tell, there's nothing to rebut.
I accept your ruling. I will only say again that I believe her testimony was she made a complaint to the zoning officer about the noise levels.
Again, I respect, I respect your recollection, Mr. Leonie, but I also respectfully disagree. I don't think that was a testimony. I don't believe there's any testimony that there's a noise violation pending. I don't believe that there's any allegation that a noise violation has been issued in relation to the property. And I don't think that noise is, is an issue that, at this point, requires rebuttal testimony, especially given the fact that you had opened the door to this testimony during your case in chief. And I understand that Mr. Doti was not available at the last hearing. However, I did provide you with an opportunity, and I asked you at the beginning of the hearing, are you, are you, are you finished? I also, it was indicated at the beginning of this hearing, prior to Mr. Gazarovski beginning his case in chief, that there was a noise expert available. You chose to, again, and certainly, I, it's not my job to make requests for you, but I certainly left the door open for you to make that request so that I could weigh it at the time. But you indicated that you would use him as a rebuttal witness if necessary. I had indicated at that time that I didn't, you know, necessarily think that the rebuttal witness would be required. And again, after listening to the objector's testimony, in my opinion, no expert rebuttal is required, nor should it be considered by the board in relation to noise.
I leave it to the board's weighing of her testimony. However, I was under the impression that we closed my direct examination at the last hearing, and that only what was available was the public comment and the objector's comments. You no doubt said to me, asked me tonight, whether I was finished. I didn't think I had the opportunity, I'm sorry if I misunderstood you, to say you got the opportunity to put on your noise expert, okay?
I understand, you know, and again, I, you know, given, given the nature of the testimony of the objector, I simply don't feel that, again, the objector has not offered any noise testimony. Any expert testimony as to noises is how I should rephrase that. And I, quite frankly, I don't, I don't feel that, that the expert testimony is required or should be admitted at this point.
Okay.
Madam Chairlady, may I? Mr. Leonie, to be fair here, I was concerned, quite frankly, that you didn't have a noise expert. And you were given a number of opportunities to bring a noise expert before this board. I think at the last meeting that we had in November, or maybe it was December, it must have been November, you were asked if you wanted more time, and you said, no, you were finished, you weren't bringing any more witnesses. And I was surprised again that there was no expert witness. I'm also surprised that the objector didn't bring in an expert witness. So I don't know why you would have a rebuttal witness to, an expert to rebut, to lay witnesses. Your client testified simply to the state act and the municipal ordinance, and all she said basically was, "We intend to comply." That was it, that's the extent of her testimony. As far as the objector is concerned, we had, you have another lay witness who testified that, "This is what I hear." No decibel levels, nothing of that nature, not alleging there's a violation. For you to bring in the witness at this point, you've had every opportunity. This board has given you every opportunity. I think this is four hearings that we had on this matter. And to be fair, we gave you every opportunity. Now to bring in a rebuttal witness to rebut against lay wit, an expert to rebut lay witnesses, to me, doesn't make any sense. I understand the problem. I mean, you're asking us essentially to reopen your case.
I accept your opinion, Mr. Leonie. I will only say that Mr. Doti was available for the four other hearings, that we could not reach them because of either testimony, adjournments for various other reasons, and the applicant was ready to present him if it had the opportunity. The one time that it had the opportunity, he was not available.
He had, we gave you every opportunity, trust me. The chairlady here was explicit in asking whether or not you had any other witnesses. He could have been available for some of the other three times. Once he couldn't make it, I understand, whatever that was. But he was always available, and you just didn't seem to want to present an expert witness, as far as noise is concerned.
I have no criticism of the board. The board's been very fair. My fault, okay?
Mr. Doti, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Happy holidays to all.
I finally got to have a witness that's from Stevens, it's my alma mater. And I'm not going to hear him.
You know, Madam Chairlady, it's 10:25. I mean, we're not going to finish this case today.
Well, first, first of all, I believe, respectfully, I believe Mr. Leonie does have another rebuttal witness that he wishes to call. And I will recommend to the chair that we continue with this application despite the hour, as we are very close to the finish line. And it has been numerous, numerous hearings on this particular application. And I think that, that both the applicant and the objector. that, that both the applicant and the objector have earned the right to finish this application this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Leonie, please call your other rebuttal witness.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Tequina. Yeah, you can. Be sworn in again.
I'm sworn, already sworn.
I, this, it is the practice of this board to re-swear witnesses. Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board or present the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, your affiliation, and your credentials, please.
My name is John Tequina. I'm the managing member of All Things Planning and Development in South Brunswick, New Jersey. I am still a licensed professional planner since the completion of my studies at Rutgers University in 1992, and I've had the pleasure of appearing before more than 125 boards around the state of New Jersey.
Forgive me for interrupting. This board accepts your credentials.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Tequina, you heard the testimony of Mr. Gemma, and would you please address his testimony in particular and your exception to some of the things he's testified to?
Certainly. Do I have the ability, do we have the ability to show what he put, what he entered into evidence, or is that not, do I just have to refer to it?
It's never requested that those items be marked, but for the purposes of the record, I think they should be. I'm gonna, technically, I suppose that the board could take judicial notice of these because they are part of our own master plan, but I am going to mark LU2, the first map produced by Mr. Gemma, as O7, and the second map, CB, as O8, just for the purposes of the record.
Madam Chair, Lady, I'm going to object to any attempt by Mr. Leonie to introduce copies of any maps, photographs, aerial photographs, and likely had ample opportunity to do that.
These, 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 these maps were introduced by your planner. I'm marking them as your exhibits because you did not, and for the purposes of the record, I'm going to mark them. And I marked LU2 as O7, which is objector seven, and I marked CB as O8, which is objectors eight. These are your exhibits, not Mr. Leonie's exhibits.
I can go? Great. So I would like to point out a few things, and the exhibits are, they are what they are. So on O7, which is the LU2 map that Mr. Gemma referred to, the thing I would like to point out, he was asked, where is the, is the joint base? And I would point out that if you look at O7, they circle the vicinity of our property in red, and actually, the lower left-hand side of his red circle is the joint base. So that large green area that encompasses the southwest corner of the township, that is all the joint base. So while it is shown in green, it is, in fact, the largest military installation in the state of New Jersey. So very, you know, critically important. So, you know, we talked about, you know, many of the questions were back and forth about whether you were agriculture or whether you were forestry, et cetera, and I remain with my testimony that this is most similar to an agricultural use. And I would also reiterate my testimony that my experience in 30 years of land use in New Jersey is that much of the agricultural uses, as well as the forestry uses, are carried out at properties where the equipment isn't based. And the, it is, they may have one farm, and then they farm 10 surrounding farms, or they have one forestry facility, and they farm many surrounding forestry facilities. And that is certainly my experience in New Jersey, it's certainly my experience in central New Jersey, that that is the case, and that it would be entirely appropriate, and that this property be suitable for the base of forestry as a, an adjunct to their facility in Tom's River, which Ms. Ruval very clearly testified is going to remain in operation. It is not a relocation to this, to this area. This is an adjunct to what they have going on there, and as we testified many, many times, we are merely looking to provide for the additional storage building and to recognize that there would be parking and storage of some equipment outside. Now, Mr. Gemma talked about the fact that there aren't stripes for the, for parking spaces on the proposed ground cover material, whether it be concrete or gravel. And the applicant is certainly happy to place parking spaces or storage spaces, or whatever the, whatever that instance may be, for the 15 pieces of equipment that may be in those locations. That is certainly a reasonable condition. The, he also talked, when he talked about, I want to really go back into his order, he then went into the discussion of what we would call the special reasons or the purposes of zoning. And, you know, obviously, we have, you know, G for, you know, providing appropriate locations for different uses, and then I for providing desirable visual environment. And again, those, desirable visual environment in and of itself could be a single reason. And we are certainly proposing to have more equipment that would be inside, we're proposing a fence, we're proposing substantial landscaping, and could certainly enhance that in any way. That would be appropriate for the board. It's disappointing that the neighbors couldn't talk. I've been lamenting it the entire time, that all of this time and money and effort could have been much better spent with some judicious landscaping between the two properties than on attorneys and planners and noise experts. But that is the situation wherein. And then the final one, and I think this is critically important, was, he talks about, you know, the coordination of public and private procedures and the efficient use of land. And, and what that really relates to is that it recognizes that New Jersey is a multi-level type of government. And we have a state government, we have quasi-judicial state organizations such as the Pine Lands, then we have county government, and we have local government. And each has a role in the land use regulatory process. And what that is really saying is that each of those individual processes should defer to the actual entity that has jurisdiction. So for example, you know, we all acknowledge that Tom Drive Road is a county road, and any access thereon is going to be regulated by the county. And, and the engineer, the town engineer and the town planner, they recognize that and come, you know, very specific in their, in their recommendations that relates to the road. Likewise, as it relates to the Pine Lands, and your ordinance is very, very specific in that the Pine Lands regulations need to be satisfied. So when we talk about the improvements that are proposed for the property in terms of its stormwater and its washing, its washwater management, et cetera, all of those proposed improvements would be proposed to the highest standard of the Pine Lands and have to meet their stormwater management and environmental requirements.
This is a rebuttal testimony that should have been brought in as a part of the applicant's original case. How was this rebuttal? It's not?
This is absolutely, I disagree. Continue.
Thank you. So, again, when you look at that specific purpose of zoning, you know, it is, it is critically important, we understand, we acknowledge we're in the Pine Lands, but again, that we're meeting those hot, those very high environmental standards that specifically relate to water quality. We think that that's critically important. Then in terms of, in terms of particular suitability, and I'm, I'm not going to, you know, do the, unfortunately, I can't relate, I can't recite all of Judge Hurley's cases from Middlesex County as, as Gordon can, I unfortunately did not pass the bar. But it is important to note that in some, in some of the, in some of those case law, that the fact that even though, and it's the Safia case, which refers to, I think that was three meetings ago, when we talked about, is this an expansion or non-conforming use, or a, or a new D1 variance? And we all agree that under the Sodala case, excuse me, let me get it right, that it's a new D1 variance, but critically important that, that that case also recognized that the presence of the existing use, the existing facility is there, is a, is something for the board to consider when it considers the, both the particular suitability and, and the negative criteria. So it is, that is also important. The fact that it is there already and was granted by the board is relevant, and, and I understand, and, and it is frustrating for, for the lay public, and, you know, I laugh because I, all of my cases, I prep you for my wife, and if I can't convince my wife, I know I'm going to have a hard time that night. And, and things frustrate her, and, but I will say to her, no, some of this is just due process. That if you have that, if you have an application and you have something that, whether it be a violation, and interestingly, the notice of violation was issued in 2023, a full year after this application was filed. So it was almost moved immediately upon filing, immediately upon issuance, but again, the applicant recognized, hey, we need to do something different here and, and come more into compliance with what the board's approval is, and they brought an application forward that they believe is an improvement on the existing situation. And, and they're entitled to that, and we understand, and sometimes that's frustrating for the lay public, and we understand that, but that is a critical part of the process. And, and then finally, I would, I would just, I understand that you read a definition, a definition of truck terminals there, and, and, you know, I think we all agree, this isn't a truck terminal. If I, if I came to, if I came before this board and presented this information and asked you to make a determination that it was a truck terminal, I think that, I think that that would not be the interpretation that this, that this board would make. But I recognize the words of the definition, you know, and, and then as it related to the definitions, the, some of the final things there are, you know, would there be an opportunity? Could they grow something there? Sure they could. Could they grow trees there? Sure they could. You know, but again, I think they're being realistic in terms of, of what they are and what they're doing. Prior approval focused a lot on the residences, not really, you know, and then on the, and then on the storage use. You know, maybe not enough on the storage use, frankly, when you look at it back in hindsight. But we came forward this time with an approval, with a request for what we think is a reasonable, a reasonable use of the property. In terms of its reducing impacts on the neighbors, you know, could there be opportunities to turn the building and have it, you know, have it shield more of the neighbor's property? Likely, I mean, all of those things are, are individual things that frankly would have worked out very well if there wasn't meeting between the property owners. But unfortunate, unfortunate we're here tonight. So I think that, you know, I recognize Mr. Gemma's point, his point on the master plan, specifically on the 2023 revision to the master plan. It's ironic, he's citing and saying, well, we're going to have limited non-residential is specifically what that amendment, you know, was for, but saying, well, it wouldn't apply here. And, you know, we acknowledge that, you know, it might, it probably was about something completely different from this. But, you know, to say that this isn't, you know, this isn't on point with that, I don't think it's true. And then the last thing, and, you know, this board knows very, very well, a conditional use that meets its conditions is a permitted use. And you only see the conditional uses that don't meet the conditions. But an extractive industry such as Clayton, which is less than a mile from this property, is a conditional use in this zone, and as long as it has its state permits under NJSA 79, I think it is, it's a permitted conditional use. So again, to say that the zone is purely single-family residential is just not true. It has different aspects of commercial that are related to agricultural, it has, and it has agricultural, and then it has extractive. So all of those things are true, and I'm available for your questions.
Tequina, I have one question. Want to step up? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. You've been to the property several times, is that correct?
Yes.
And you've been to the area several times, is that correct?
Yes.
Are there any single-family developments within the RD1 zone that you observed?
Single-family developments, no. They are predominantly property that are single homes on single properties that appear to have developed over time. I would consider a development to be something that's built together, you know, even five, six, seven, eight, 10 homes that would be developed, you know, frankly, what Mrs. Black was discussing, you know, upon Ridge, might have been, you know, considered a development because it would have been built contemporaneously, et cetera, but the predominant use in the area are, are individual homes of different vintage, of different size, of different style. But it's, it's not, it's certainly not a single-family residential area, as I called it, the pristine R1 type. It's not that, not that type of area.
In terms of negative criteria, the zone permits single-family homes on either 3.2 acre lots or one acre lots, depending upon the storage. Is, is some future use of the property a negative impact on that property because it can be done in the zone?
No, I don't believe it is. I think that any future use of any of the surrounding properties would consider what is here, and, and again, I think with, with a property either, you know, existing as it is, or hopefully with the new approval, with the new indoor storage, et cetera, and the environmental improvements that'll be there, the landscaping, et cetera, I think that, I certainly believe that we would have no, no substantial negative impact on the area.
So one of the uses in the zone is schools, is that right?
Yes.
So a school could go next door?
Yes.
Could go on this property?
Yes.
Could a residential aspect of a school be permitted as well?
I don't.
In conjunction with, as accessory to a school? Is there anything that prohibits that?
Frankly, Steve, I don't know. I never read it that way. I read schools, I didn't read schools with a, with a head mask, I, that, that's a little too, I read it as public, I read it as you could, you can do a school.
All right, you've answered the question. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Mr. Gazarovski?
Yeah. I hope to be brief.
I hope to be brief. I, I've listened to your testimony, and you've identified that most of the uses in the area are single-family residential homes, that there are not subdivision things of that nature, correct?
That is what I said, yes.
Would you describe the area as rural in nature?
It, it is, it is rural in terms of its density. I was very clear in my testimony, specifically as it related to Tom's River Road and as it related to the presence of the base across the street, it is not a bucolic, idyllic, reserved, you know, country retreat.
Well, it's certainly not bucolic. Once your client got there, is that not so?
I disagree entirely.
Oh, you think, you, I mean, did you see the exhibits which your mark showed on the screen, copies of which you presented to your attorney, and hopefully you looked at it also? Would you look at all of these photographs of the trailers, the trucks, the log, you think that's bucolic in nature?
No, I think it's agricultural in nature.
And you want, you think it's agricultural in nature?
Yes.
You want, you think you want more of this, more of this bucolic, so to say, development, correct? All of these logs and trailers and tractors and the like?
I think that a use that is consistent with what are, we have proposed, with the two indoor storage uses, with the limited outdoor uses in the two concrete areas, that that would be an appropriate use of the property.
I, I think you referred to saying this is a agricultural, commercial use in nature, did you not?
It's an agricultural use, yes.
Are you familiar with the zoning ordinance is in, in Jackson?
Yes.
I want to refer you to section 244, there's 87A and B.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that somewhat more slowly?
244, 87, capital A and capital B. 244, 87B says the following accessory uses shall be permitted. One, agricultural, commercial establishment. Is that what you think this is?
No.
It goes on to say, provided that the products sold were grown by the owner on the premises. Are any products being grown on these premises that are being sold to the public or to anyone?
No.
Now, there was some testimony in reference to an adjacent parcel upon which the applicant was in some fashion utilizing it as a part of his site. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay, now, do you know whether or not that lot in block was included in this application?
Mr. Gazarovski, what's this got to do with the rebuttal of what Mr. Gemma testified?
I'm sorry?
I forgot already.
What, what?
The question was, what does this have to do with Mr. Tequina's rebuttal of Mr. Gemma's testimony?
Yeah, thank you.
He's offering testimony supposedly in rebuttal to Mr. Gemma's testimony.
Exactly.
And when he began, I objected to his testimony because he was not in fact rebutting Mr. Gemma, but he was giving new testimony.
Mr. Gazarovski, I'm gonna disagree because Mr. Murphy said it was indeed rebuttal. He, he was rebutting what Mr. Gemma, or he was giving his opinion of Mr. Gemma's testimony.
An opinion?
He was giving his opinion, his rebuttal, his professional opinion of Mr. Gemma's testimony.
Well, you know, you may very well be right, but not, not the way I was hearing. Having said that, and I think he acknowledges, did you not, that in fact the applicant is utilizing a, an adjacent lot, which was not a part of this application as a part?
Objection, objection.
Excuse me one second.
There's, there's no foundation that the applicant is using an adjoining property in violation of any zoning ordinance or as part of this application.
I thought this witness acknowledged that that was going on, and I think Mrs.
No, no, what witness?
Mrs. Black testified as to that.
Madam Chairlady, I, I really ask through our attorney, it just seems like they're going beyond the testimony of Mr. Gemma. We have people from the public who want to be heard.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I'm gonna cut you off, Mr. Gazarovski.
It's getting late, and I have no further questions.
All right. Does the board have any, I'm sorry, strike that, does Mr. Leoni have any redirect?
No, I have no further questions of this witness.
Does the board have any questions for this witness?
Thank you.
You have been very patient, and I thank you.
No problem.
If you would please raise your right hand to be sworn, do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you are about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you would, please state your name, spell your last, and provide your, sorry, the hour's late, provide your address, please.
Felicia Finn, my last name is spelled F-I-N-N, my first name is spelled F-E-L-I-C-I-A. My address is 1760 Patterson with one T Avenue, Whiting, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I would just like to say that I am a licensed real estate agent for 20 years, and the last 10 I've been a licensed real estate broker. And I've sold many, many homes in Jackson, Ocean County. I've been involved in new construction sites, I've sold commercial properties and industrial properties. And it is my professional opinion that the industrial operation next to the Blacks' home will most definitely hurt the Blacks' property value, whether the property remains as it is.
Objection, objection.
This is my opinion, I'm allowed to express my opinion.
You're not an expert in terms of appraisals of values, you're a real estate broker. That does not make you an expert as to value. I objected testimony as it relates to value.
She's, she's facing her opinion based upon numerous transactions that she's conducted in the area. It's an opinion as a real estate agent, broker, salesperson. She's not offering any appraisals.
She's, she's offering value testimony.
Well, she could.
Well, I can say that if you.
Hold on, hold on, just, I just wanted to address your question. She did say her address is in Whiting, however, she conducts business in Jackson, has sold in number of numerous.
I sell in Ocean County and in Jackson very often.
She, I thought she was testifying as a, from the public, not as an expert witness, from the public.
She is testifying as a member of the public, not as an expert witness. The testimony, testimony can be weighed accordingly. Overruled.
So it is my opinion that the property value, whether it remains as it is, 30-acre lot, or if it is in a subdivision, that any of the operation, if it continues the way it is, will hurt their value. In addition, builders don't want to purchase land for building homes, and in Jackson, homes are ranging, new construction homes could be anywhere from $600,000 to $800,000 homes on acre lots. That would, this would turn builders away, and as, if it was just the Blacks' home sold as it is right now, single-family buyers will also be turned off by the operation next door. I have visited the property, so I've been on that driveway. It is definitely something that a buyer would walk away from, and that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
One moment, please. Have the Blacks listed their property with you for sale?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Finn, have you been paid to come here tonight?
No, sir, I have not been paid.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address.
Robert Connor, C-O-N-N-O-R, 1411 Tom's River Road, Jackson.
Thank you.
Okay, I live next to the property, the second property that the applicant bought. Now, I know you have your 200-foot row, so my property is basically 200-foot from where they want to put up the new building. But since they bought the property next door, they've been using that driveway for ingress and egress into the business. They're actually driving on my property to get in and out because they don't know where the property line is. Right? That's one thing. I've been to the zoning board, Jeff's not here to, to defend himself tonight, but, so we won't get into that, but he told me he couldn't do anything. Everything that's going on over there has nothing to do with the variance they got in the beginning in 2017. They're doing what they please. And since they got the violation, and since this is in litigation, this is going on, they're brazenly doing more and more of it. That's a slap in the face to you, to this board. It just goes on and on. It's gotta stop. Me and Jeff are gonna straighten out our differences somewhere along the line, but, but Mr. Leoni, I guess, it should have been your, your job to notify me when this went through. So if they're driving on my property, I should have been notified that this was going at all, right?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yes.
The question posed by Mr. Leoni was, are you in 200 feet of the current property?
Yeah, I, I think that Mr. O'Connor, is it?
Connor.
Connor, is referring to the adjoining property, which is Lot 32.
Right, which your client is using for ingress and egress into his business.
That's not true.
Yes, yes it is. I have photos, and I gave them to.
You may have a photo of my client going on his property.
He has no business doing that because the two properties are not connected.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, I have a very simple question. Is Lot 32 part of this application?
No.
Thank you.
I mean, I asked the zoning if it got to the subdivision. Nothing. They didn't consolidate the properties. When we were here on the September 20th, the young man that wanted to put the ATV truck in his backyard, he was told he had to consolidate that lot and his house. Why is this different? You know, there's something very fishy going on. That's the way I see it. But this has to stop. Yeah.
You're not part of the application, because I just want to know who owns that lot?
Right.
Who owns that lot, or where is that?
Who owns Lot 32, Mr. Leoni?
The applicant, the, the roofless own that lot, rented out to a tenant on that property, but they do not use that lot for any activity on their property.
Is Lot 31 undersized in the zone? Is Lot 31 undersized in the zone?
No, it's a conforming lot.
Each application is taken on its own merits, okay? There's a very specific reason that the application that you were referencing, which is not part of this application, required that particular condition, okay? Again, not part of this application. But, but here, because of the size of lots, the doctrine of merger would not apply, in my, in my opinion, off the cuff, and so there's really no requirement that those lots be merged.
It's two separate lots, though.
Correct.
You have a rental house in the front.
But that, the, my point is, under the municipal land use law, notice must be sent to properties within 200 feet of the, of the property which is the subject of the application. No improvements, as far as I can tell, and no testimony's been proffered to, to tell the board that any improvements are being proposed as to Lot 32 in respect to this application. Given that that's the case, the 200-foot notices under the municipal land use law would, would be in relation to Lot 31. So that, I don't know if your property's within 200 feet of Lot 31.
Well, my problem is, if he's gonna use Lot 32, use the driveway from there and come up through there and access Lot 31.
Right. If I may, look, we're, we're talking in circles here, the bottom line is this, that lot is not part of this application, there's been, there's been no testimony on it. If you feel somebody is trespassing across your property, call an attorney, that's not the zoning officer's, that's not the zoning officer's job, right? If you feel that that lot is being accessed and used by a commercial business, that is a code enforcement issue, that's not Jeff, that's code enforcement. So you're speaking with the wrong people. Either talk to an attorney if you think somebody's trespassing on, over your property, right? Simple. Or talk to code enforcement if you think it's being used for commercial purposes without approvals, but it's not part of this application. So this is not, this is not the jurisdiction for your complaint.
No, well, I've done that. I went to code enforcement, and he was there, and he turned it over to Jeff. See, that's the problem.
It's not part of this application.
Well, that's the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Connor.
Anyone else in the public wish to come forward?
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you would, please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address.
Daniel J. Black, 1461 Tom's River Road, Jackson, New Jersey.
You are the objector?
Yes.
You're represented by counsel?
I'm, I'm Vicki Sussman. Yes, I'm represented by Mr. Gazarovski, Mr. Gemma.
You were not called as a witness during Mr. Gazarovski's case.
No, no, I'm just, can I speak in the public? I didn't know if I can or not.
Technically, no. You're represented by counsel.
Okay, all right, no problem.
Sorry about that.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the public wish to come forward? Yeah, there are any who have proposed a statement?
I do. My closing statement is as follows. I've tempted to say that this is just simply an outrageous application. It's outrageous because back in 2017, the applicant bade before the board and sought what would be a relatively quiet application, and there were specific restrictions which were placed on the approval. Right from the get-go, the applicant abused all of those restrictions, paid no attention to them, and ran his business the way he wished to, in contrary to the, the resolution of approval of 2017. He was served with numerous violations which are still ongoing, but the most important part of all is that his presence is gonna stifle the further rural development of this property. When you look at the series of photographs that were produced by my client, how could you look in good faith at those photographs and say, it's bad enough that we have this existing condition? Do we now want to double it by allowing this applicant, in this particular application, going for a use variance to double the intensity of the use? I would respectfully submit to you, what you're going to do is you're going to permit the destruction of one of the quiet areas, rural areas of Jackson. Now, when I first began my practice, I was very familiar with Jackson. I think at that particular time, there was one attorney in the town, and it's, of course, now grown. And it's grown because of the perseverance of the governing body to establish zones that prohibit and restrict the over-exploitation of the land. That is what this is. This is the exploitation of a rural piece of land very selfishly for a business person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gazarovski. Mr. Leoni? Mr. Leonie?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank the board and the professionals for over a year giving us the opportunity to present this application. I think the questions have been very insightful, probative. I believe the witnesses have addressed all those questions. I think that the application had been filed here over a year ago, and because of either time, the board's reorganization, other reasons, it has taken a long time to get to this point. But the objective of the application is to comply with whatever this board approves and reduce the activities that are objectionable on there. To the extent that we tried to meet with the blacks to see what else we could do to accommodate them, we were declined. We've tried to provide, the applicant has tried to provide, privacy fencing, restricted areas where they can put their equipment. There's never been a question about the type of equipment that would be on this property. It was a question of whether it could go inside a building or had to be outside. They didn't properly address that at the time. They're trying to cure that condition at this time. So I think Mr. Taikina has provided special reasons to grant the variance. It is a D-one variance, we understand that. His only comment about an existing use of the property has to do with the negative criteria that's not gonna deteriorate that property. There's a lot of speculation as to what can go on adjoining properties, but the fact of the matter is, it's speculation. It could be a school, it could be other kinds of commercial uses, it could be other kinds of residential uses. So I want to thank the board for its consideration. I ask that you allow this applicant to continue its use of the property. It will respect and comply with every conditions are on the property, and it'll be a ratable, a continued ratable for the commercial use of this property. And I know this town wants to have ratables, commercial uses, in addition to single-family, not as an exclusion to other users. So I thank the board again, wish a happy holiday, ask for your approval.
For the chair? I would just like to remind the board that there's two components to this application that you're deliberating on. First and foremost is a use variance, a D-one variance, for the use that they are currently proposing as part of this application. If you were to vote favorably on that use variance, there's a second component. That's, they're seeking both preliminary and final site plan approval. That's the design details, that's the design layout, that's, is there enough landscaping? Is the parking in the correct area, and so on? All right? Like any site plan application, there's two components to a site plan. There's preliminary, and there's final. If you feel that there's sufficient information, if you were to approve the use variance and find that there's sufficient information presented for both preliminary and final, you can vote on both of those together as one. If you feel that there's insufficient information for final site plan, or that you want to see additional details and additional changes to those plans, you can just grant preliminary. But please start with the use variance vote first, and if that were to be approved, then you can deliberate and even ask me questions on the site plan component.
Mr. Leonie, just for the purposes of the record, I'm going to clarify once more, and we've addressed it at the beginning of the hearing. The board only has six members. You are, you have chosen to go forward, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll jump in. It's late, and I've got some preliminary observations I'd like to make right away on the record. I've been out to the property twice, I've driven around the back of it, I went down Whitcomb Road, and every which way I go, I see residential properties everywhere. Although the word bucolic has been used to describe this as not a bucolic area, I don't necessarily agree with that description, simply because there's a county road that runs through it. I'm very impressed by the nature of the neighborhood and the character of that neighborhood, and that it is very residential, and it is very quiet. That's number one. Number two, there was some commentary that was made in regards to what the objector could hear, and although I think the ruling was correct in not allowing a noise expert, what the objector could hear and what was testified to, I think, goes to the nature of what's happening on that property. And it's a continuing type of business nature. On the issues of forestry and agriculture, I'm not buying that for a minute. This is not a forestry operation, it's not an agricultural operation. I believe the semantics that were used to try to bootstrap this into some type of reasoning to have us believe this is agriculture or forestry is an error. I think Mr. Gemma adequately addressed that. I think clearly for it to be forestry or for it to be agriculture, it's gotta be something that's grown and developed on that property, and it is not. Next, as to the concept of, does it promote the general welfare? That's a critical issue that we always have to deal with when we're dealing with use variances. I do not believe these special reasons were adequately expressed upon the record. I do not believe that this site is particularly suited for what they want to do on this property. I believe that what Mr. Gemma had talked about in terms of the amended master plan, we should not disturb the residential character of this area, and by allowing this type of business to operate on this type of property with those type of machines, the type of noise that they generate, the lack of testimony in terms of how you would deal with the spill-off, the hydraulic fluids, and everything else that would generate from that type of work has not been nearly presented clearly enough for me to even consider this as a reasonable argument to allow a use variance. I've been out there, I've seen these vehicles and these trucks. They're too big, they're too loud, there's too many of them, and they're there too frequently. And those are my observations, and I think it gives you an idea as to why I fall in the application. Those are my observations.
Madam Chair Lady? I wholeheartedly agree with most of what Mr. Book just espoused. One problem that I have here is that this applicant is allowed to use that property for storage. That's already been decided in two thousand and seventeen. What they're here for now is kind of an expansion of the use, and I'm not talking about expansion of a non-conforming use, I'm talking about an expansion of the operation itself by adding an additional building, putting a bathroom in another. I couldn't care less about the bathroom, obviously it's required under OSHA from what I've heard testimony of. So what we're looking at here is a D-one variance. That's been conceded to by Mr. Taikina, by Mr. Leonie, that this is just a, it's a D-one variance. I had indicated, and I still believe, that when we're looking at a D-one variance to satisfy Mr. Gazarovski's arguments, although I'm not supporting his argument, I'm simply addressing it, that we do have to look at, we have, the board has an obligation to look at the overall operation and the impact of what's being added to that overall operation. So that satisfies that question that was presented, whether or not we should be doing this application anew, or just looking at it as an amendment. We are looking at it as a new, we're doing it absolutely anew, because we have to consider what this, what the impact is of the additions to the existing operation. So it's a D-one. Relative to the positive criteria, I agree with Mr. Book, I'm not satisfied with Mr. Taikina's testimony relative to the positive criteria. We have to keep in mind that when you look at the special reasons, not only do you look at the purposes, but you have to look at the particular suitability of this property. When we talk about particular suitability, we have to look at the general welfare. The general welfare is served because this use is peculiarly fitted to the particular location that we're talking about. All I've heard is that the benefit here is to the applicant. I haven't heard benefit to the general welfare. I've heard Mr. Taikina say that the benefit being proposed is because we have military installations nearby, whether it's McGuire, or whether it's Lakehurst Naval Air Station, we have aircraft in the area. I agree, wholeheartedly, that the areas must be cleared for safety purposes to approach the runways. No question about that. That doesn't take an expert to testify about. But there's no, there's nothing on this property that creates a problem for any aircraft landing in the area. I'm speaking about this property. Whether they're working on properties in Pennsylvania to clear an approach area, or in Vermont to clear an approach area, we have to look at the benefit that's accruing to Jackson because of, because this use being proposed on this particular location. This particular location, as far as I'm concerned, is almost nude. It just has, the pictures that have been provided to us have only equipment on the site. Whether that violates the two thousand and seventeen resolution is not for us to decide, that's for another agency in the township to decide. So as far as the positive criteria, I know Mr. Taikina testified relied on G, G being the purpose of zoning to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations. His response was, in support for it, was, well, we have sufficient space, we've got six-plus acres here. That, the zone allows a multiple variety of uses, but he equates the agricultural use to the use that's being proposed here. The agricultural use, I think it was defined by Mr. Gemma from our ordinance, which indicates that it's for a process that ongoes on the site. There's no such agricultural site activity going on in this site. Mr. Taikina also compares the agricultural use to a forestry use. Mr. Gemma also testified as to what definition forestry uses are. There's no forestry use going on here. I think what the applicant is asking us to believe as an example, and this is my example, you know, trucking is very, very important to our existence. There's no question about, without truckers, we could be, we'd have some major economic problems. But to equate, for example, let me take a Budweiser. If a truck comes into Budweiser in Newark, where they're manufacturing beer, and they pick up the beer, and they go to a retail outlet for sale, the manufacturing took place in Newark, the truck went to the retailer, that becomes a seller. That's a different operation. You cannot say that the trucking is part of the manufacturing of the beer. It is not. It went from a manufacturing type of aspect to a commercial aspect of transportation and retail. So I discount Mr. Taikina's examples in that regard. He also states Purpose I, where promotes a general visual environment, and he's relying on the fact that they're going to demolish the chicken coop and build another facility. Okay. Under the two thousand and seventeen resolution, if I'm correct, the applicant can use that facility for purposes of storage. But it's been indicated the new facility is gonna be significantly larger, maybe not significantly, it's gonna be larger than what is currently existing. They could rehab, which I think is part of the resolution two thousand and seventeen, they can rehab the chicken coop for purposes of storage. So I'm not accepting Purpose I in that regard, and I'll get that a little bit further on. He's, Mr. Taikina also relied on paragraph M of the purposes, and that's to encourage the coordination of various public and private procedures and activity shaping land development. Quite frankly, I was confused by that, and it brought up a number of questions in my mind. He indicated that it's more efficient use of land to use it here rather than use the operation someplace else. That went over my head. That one, it just did not make any sense. I thought Mr. Gemma's response to that was more accurate and acceptable. It's also important to note that, as I indicated, not only is the applicant required to establish the special reasons, special reasons don't stop with the purposes of zoning. I've said this before, and I'll say it again. The purposes of zoning, as they are listed in the municipal land use law initially, were to aid the municipalities in designing districts for the various types of uses to be utilized within the township itself. It has been decided that these purposes support zoning, it's a benefit to zoning, a benefit to the municipality. But it also requires particular suitability. And particular suitability, as I've indicated before, goes to the general welfare. The general welfare is served because this use that is proposed is particularly fitted to the particular location. I haven't heard anything about that, quite frankly. I'm quite surprised by the testimony that's been presented in that regard. The particular suitability presented by the applicant through his planner was basically, hey, this is a large site, it's six-plus acres, it already has structures on the property, so consistent with those uses are what is proposed here. Well, you know, and that's like saying, because I got a variance before, I'm entitled to a variance again. But no, that's not the way it works. Mr. Taikina also indicated in his particular suitability, he indicated that it's a wide variety of uses that are permitted. He did mention, even when he came back in rebuttal, indicated the extractive services, extractive uses that are permitted in the zone. Well, extractive uses are significantly different than what is being proposed here. And I'll ask the planner to correct me if I'm wrong, but extractive services are conditional uses. Number two, they are allowed to expand up to the borders of the property without getting another variance. That's not what applies here. This is another use that's being added to this site. So I'm not accepting his testimony relative to the fact that the wide variety of uses that are permitted are an element of particular suitability. Lastly, we get to the enhanced quality of proof, but that enhanced quality of proof is really directed to the negative criteria. So let's talk about the negative criteria. Is there a substantial detriment to the public good? As I said before, I was quite concerned that the applicant did not provide any noise testimony. That was the first thing in my mind that would come up with all these trucks going back and forth. I was also surprised to hear the applicant testify that they were gonna turn off these backup signals in these trucks so as not to disturb the neighbors. I hope they notified their insurance company of that, because I gotta tell you, if somebody gets hurt when those noises are turned off, I don't want Jackson Township to be a party to it by saying, hey, it's okay to do that. So we're making clear we're making no comment relative to that issue at all. But I was surprised that there was no noise expert being presented. As I said before, Mr. Leonie was given an opportunity a number of times to provide the expert witness, expert noise witness, and he waited until he wanted to bring up the witness as a rebuttal witness, but there was no witness to rebut. They were just lay witnesses saying, I heard noise. Okay, nothing. There was no traffic expert that got, really got involved, we didn't get any, I mean, we're talking about consolidating some uses from Tom's River into Jackson, and although there's no testimony that they're going to shut down Tom's River, but there was testimony they're going to consolidate it. To me, they're bringing some of those uses from Tom's River to Jackson. I mean, these are trucks and heavy equipment, and there's no traffic expert? What's the traffic impact? You can't tell me that that's, that's, that does not create a problem for at least the neighborhood in general regard for purposes of the negative criteria. So, I don't think he's met, I don't think the applicant met its obligation in that regard. With regard to the other part of the negative criteria, that it doesn't substantially impair the intent and purposes of zone plan and the master plan. Mr. Gemma talked about the master plan, Mr. Taikina talked about the master plan. I've got to tell you, my, my overall reaction is that this property, with the 2017 resolution that's been granted, allowed it to have a commercial use? Okay. But this property now, under this application, is evolving. It is evolving not to a commercial use, but to an industrial use. We're talking about heavy equipment here, we're talking about maintenance to heavy equipment, we're talking about a totally different type of use. It becomes more industrial than it does anything else. The increase, the increase in the number of buildings, bringing in additional work to be, to be maintained on the property, to be repaired on the property, to be washed on the property, to be stored on the property, is a, a serious increase, and that becomes more industrial than it does even commercial, even if commercial were permitted in, in the zone. As far as the enhanced quality of proof, which is required to support the negative criteria, I forget if it was Mr. Mr. Taikana, Taikana or Mr. Gemma, who indicated that it's supposed to be very difficult to get a D1 use variance, it's not supposed to be an easy thing to do. And the applicant has a, has a significant obligation to prove its specific elements, and I don't think it did that. And when it comes to the enhanced quality of proof, Medici gave us examples of that, and I, I talked about it at one of our previous meetings, and I, I suggested, for example, the Wawa type of operation, where there was a gas station, and now they want to expand it to gas, a gas station and a, a marketplace, where they sell coffee and sandwiches and everything else. And the question became, is that one use or two uses? And in fact, it ends up being two uses, and you need two variances for that. If one may have been an expansion of the use to permit the, the gas station, and the other is a D1 variance to permit the marketplace associated with it. But then, as a result of that case, the municipalities saw a new type of use, it evolved. So, now they allow these gas stations with the marketplace associated with it as a single use. That means the towns look at these things all the time. This variance was granted in 2017, the master plan was, was reviewed, I think someone testified in 2019. We don't see any changes here. We haven't seen, the governing body hasn't reacted to it at all. Mr. Taikina says it's just an oversight on, on the part of the governing body. If he knows about Jackson Township, Jackson Township has been involved in litigation over zoning for the last 10 years, and its governing body has had to look at the various ordinances that, that impact the various types of uses involved. Admittedly, you know, a lot of litigation, you know, is, is based on equal protection, and that is that one use should be treated the same as other uses. But that means you look at all of the uses that we allow, and how, how one is, impacts the other. You can't tell me that the governing body has not looked into it, they had to look into it. So, I find, I find, I feel that the, the activities that were suggested by, by the applicant's planner, that it's just an oversight, no, I'm not buying that at all. We report to the governing body on an annual basis, variances that are granted, this variance was granted in 2017, and the governing body still has not acted to change the zoning in any way. So, based on that, I, I, I find that the applicant has not met the positive criteria for the reasons stated, has not met the negative criteria, has not met the enhanced quality of proof necessary to support the negative, negative criteria. So, I think the, the, my, my overall opinion here is that the, the proofs are lacking, and the application for the uses, for the use variance be denied. It should be noted that if, if, if the denial is supported by this board, that the applicant still has the right to use the property for storage using building number four, but not for maintenance, not allowed, and not much, there's nothing we can do about that. What we are denying is the expansion of this operation. As I've indicated, to me, the expansion goes from what was commercial to something more industrial, which is not intended under the master plan or the zoning ordinance, and the applicant is left for what, what it's entitled to, and I make no comment on that. Thank you.
I just have a few quick thoughts, kind of separately from what was discussed. I think a lot of the objections seem to be more code enforcement issues. While I sympathize with, you know, the conditions, I don't, I, I didn't seem to think they really carried so much weight into our decision. However, I, I, well, not however, but a, a couple of other points with the traffic and noise. I didn't think those were, I mean, noise was a concern, but not really one, what, with regards to like a violation of any ordinance, noise ordinance, you know, not, not really speaking to it being exceeding decibel levels or being at times of day that are, you know, would, would be a challenge. However, I, I, I think one of the arguments that was made by the applicant was that some of the concerns that were brought up were, were the, the, this application was attempting to remedy, and I, I guess I found that to be a little bit of a stretch, though, to kind of make that a, a positive criteria in some way. I'm not sure if, that wasn't specifically the argument, but, you know, that, that's like remedying a violation, and I can't speak to whether there is or isn't violation, but it, you know, if, if that were, that's, you know, that, that doesn't seem to be really a consideration. I think a, a challenge of intensifying like, almost like what seems to be an industrial use, I guess much to the dismay of neighbors, is, 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 I think, my, my biggest challenge with this. And polluting the environment, the, or even just using that term loosely, is, is a challenge as well, sort of disrupting what, what seems to be a somewhat more residential neighborhood and area, just a couple of thoughts.
Any additional comments?
Madam Chair, one last comment. Relative to the testimony by Ms. Finn, who was a realtor, I'm not considering, I don't know how the board feels about, but I'm not considering her testimony at all. She indicated that there would be a deprivation in, in the value of the property because the operation, she didn't have any comparable, comparables to testify to as a, an appraiser usually would do. And it just seemed like a backdoor attempt on the part of the objector to bring in additional testimony that should have been brought in in its case, in the, in the objector's case in chief. So, I'm not considering her testimony at all.
Madam Chair, if there's no further comment by the, by the board, nothing else? Now, I move to deny the motion for the...
We have a...
Precisely.
Just to clarify, we are moving to deny the use variance, and then by extension, that would effectively deny the preliminary and final site plan application. I just want to make that clear for the record.
Right. And...
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Mr. Harley?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Parnas?
Yes.
And Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Move to adjourn, Your Honor?
All...
All right.